Terry, can they hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Holly, go out of my chair. Uh, temporary.
We're in the open.
All right, good evening, everyone. Ms. Slender, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Counselor Ralph.
Here.
Afghan.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
Wenlin.
Here.
Imbo.
Here.
Anne Verdic.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under.
Wenlin.
Here.
Yeah.
Anne Verdic. Derek.
All right. It's great to have everyone here. We are going to start tonight by welcoming our Metro Counselor, Councilor Christine Lewis. We are excited for her to be joining us. I want to extend, and this is her first time in our chamber. She hasn't been before the City Council since 2019. We're glad that you're here tonight. Counselor Lewis recently joined us for the cultural exchange event on September 17th and spoke at the event introducing our headliner. So we really appreciate Counselor Lewis's partnership and Metro's partnership with the city, and we're glad to have you here tonight on Metro Updates.
Tonight, oh, I'm not gonna be part of that echo. I'm really excited to give you just a couple of updates about what I'm working on. I see some of you in committees. I see a couple of you on boards we serve on together. But I just wanted to give you the overarching kind of metro, what's hot, what's going on, what keeps me up at night, and then also make sure to have time to hear from you. Yeah, my name's Christine Lewis. I serve on Metro Council. I'm in year one of my second term, so really glad to be kind of back at the regular work after we all did so much special work during COVID. And, you know, it's really nice to have a partner here in Lake Oswego, the opportunity to introduce the band the other week, but lots of partnerships, I think, between Metro and Lake Oswego. First and foremost, as our region is coming out of this pandemic, out of shutdown, we know so much of the narrative nationally and locally is we've got to get cleaned up. We've got to clean up the streets of the region. And in terms of garbage and recycling, our RID Patrol has had great success. Eight hundred and eighty tons of garbage taken off the streets just last year. Tonnage doesn't mean a whole lot. What people want to see is clean streets. They want to be driving down the road or walking down a path and not trip over garbage. And what that really means to us is that we've got our response time down to one day. That means if you do see garbage dumped in the right of way, you can report it, ridpatrol.org or gometro.gov. You can fill out a form online, or that also has a phone number. Within one day, we will come and we will take whatever it is. Anecdotally, RID Patrol crews have reported that there's been a major shift in behavior. Post-pandemic, we've seen far more household-type waste, so it's not just tied to our houselessness problem. Since the pandemic, a lot more people seem to think it's okay to just dump on the side of the street, and that's obviously not okay, but we are trying to step up to the challenge. Also, the opportunity to make sure that we're continuing to work on kind of the big stuff. We were able to remove two vessels out of the Willamette River with some special funds that we got from the state, and we want to be able to continue to do that as well, like half-sunken boats that were an eyesore and totally abandoned, not something we'd ever done before and wouldn't have been able to do absent the state's support. Right now, well, when you think of Metro, you probably think garbage and urban growth, and we're in the middle of both of those things. So urban growth management runs on a six-year cycle, and our goal is to make sure that every time we go through the cycle, we are looking at land availability for 20 years of growth, both in housing and in economic development and job lands. Metro manages the urban growth boundary, and under state law, we have very specific metrics we have to look at in terms of residents and the population trends, but we also can have a community stakeholder process. So we've just kicked off that process with a table that's made up of residents from across the region, and I'm actually trying to generate more names of folks, particularly from Clackamas and particularly underrepresented folks in the conversation. So if any of you have ideas about Clackamas voices, I'd be interested. But anyway, our process is fall of '23. Right now, our Stakeholder Roundtable is launching. In fall and winter, we're also going to launch a youth cohort. That is something that we're doing specifically in partnership with the CBO, but I know you have a very strong youth council, and I've asked that all the youth councils in the area get notified as well, because we are looking to make sure that we engage youth on the land use decisions that are going to affect their future. Also, this fall and winter, the city and counties will be asked to review the preliminary buildable land inventory results, so that in next spring, city-proposed submissions for potential urban growth boundary expansion areas can be accepted. And then we will have the draft urban growth report, which is the metric we use to decide if and how much land to bring in, that we compare to the city proposals. That will be ready in summer of next year. So lots moving there. It's a technical process, but as I said, under state law, we can't have that stakeholder table, and that is something that we have kicked off. We've had one meeting last Friday, and we're going to continue to add members to that table. Something new that Metro is working on just in the past five years, after voters twice in 2018 and again in 2020 asked the region to step up, is housing. We have a housing crisis, and it's both in number of affordable units, but also in working with our houseless population. And first, I want to tackle the built environment and our affordable housing bond. That measure passed in 2018. We got work to work right away, and we are on pace to exceed our goals. You'll see that we have both a total unit goal, but also very affordable, so the zero to 30% income goals, that is half the units, as well as making sure that we have appropriately-sized units available for families, and we're not just building single bedrooms. In just two years, nearly a thousand apartments have opened across the region, from Gresham to Hillsborough, from Clackamas to Kenton, and here in District Two, Fuller Road Station opened in April, and we also have our Gladstone fully populated. We have nearly 2,600 apartments in permitting or design, and this is a smart investment, because the bond sold at a good rate, and we're actually able to get more than we promised to voters. So we are on pace to exceed our goals. We told voters that we'd build housing for 12,000 people, and if all goes as planned at this moment, we expect more than 14,000 people to be housed through the bond program. As you can see the project map, we really are trying to get to every corner of the region. You're familiar, obviously, with the Merrill Hirst Commons Development. We're proud to be a partner there. Obviously, Mercy Housing Northwest is in the lead, and that's 100 units of affordable housing right here in Lake Oswego. So I've been on-site twice. I'm really impressed with their work, not only the thoughtfulness of that nonprofit in partnering with the sisters, but also what they're able to do in terms of achieving environmental goals with their development. It's going to be, I believe, Passive House certified, or at least it's on track to be Passive House. Again, I mentioned the 2020 measure. That's the supportive housing services measure, and that's two taxes that are collected specifically to work with folks who are experiencing houselessness and need additional levels of services in order to find stability. In August, we received the preliminary results for our second year of this program, and Clackamas has made incredible progress. We didn't have a lot to build on. Before this measure passed, Clackamas, all funds combined, would spend about $8 million a year on all things homelessness, and the order of magnitude has increased sixfold for them. Clackamas County has added 140 shelter beds that were either brand-new or were set to close without the funding from Metro voters. So 140 shelter beds in Clackamas County are at the beginning of that pipeline, where you can help stabilize somebody in a shelter bed. And then, when it comes to permanent housing and placement, 840 people have been placed in permanent housing in Clackamas County. So achieving the work of the local implementation plan, obviously, the work in Clackamas County is building the structure as you're trying to take off, and the work needs to be done in better coordination with the cities. Mayor, I've heard you ask the county to do more through the C4 table. I would share that concern, but I do think that in terms of fulfilling their obligations, Clackamas County is meeting the goals of their LIP. Region-wide, we've helped nearly 5,000 people find housing and 1,400 shelter beds, so that gives you the sensor proportion of how many shelter beds have been opened in Multnomah and Washington Counties. Each of the three counties has their struggles. Each of the three counties started in a very different spot. Clackamas County, I think, has risen to the challenge with a few bumps in the road, but if the local implementation plan is the North Star, they're still running towards it. The regional transportation plan is at the end of its cycle for development and review. Our RTP is a plan that makes sure that our transportation system supports clean air, improves safety, and relieves congestion. The RTP will need to be voted on by November of this year, both at the J-PAC table and at Metro, to make sure that we can continue to receive federal funds for all projects in the region. It's a blueprint that guides investments, and there's two project lists. There's a constrained list. Those are projects that we expect could be fundable within the next 20-year time period, and then there's the unconstrained list, which is kind of all of the projects that people are watching or developing. As of right now, I think that the project list does right by Clackamas County. It includes some of the mega projects that we've all heard about, including making sure that we continue to work on 205, but I do think that the project list and the policies right now support Clackamas. I heard from you, Mayor, that we needed to do more in EV charging planning, and I have in my inbox, as of like half an hour before I came here, some suggested language to make sure that we are responsive to that request. I'd be interested to hear from counselors tonight if there are any additional priorities I need to look for in this late hour. I've got like two more meetings to raise suggestions, but want to make sure that I lift up local concerns. That's all the stressful stuff. Then there's the fun stuff I get to do as a Metro Counselor, and one of the most fun things is making sure that the Oregon Zoo is a fun, safe, and educational place for people to visit. I have two kids, so I'm there quite often, you know, experiencing it as a counselor, but also a community member, and it's a real treasure for our community. The work that's done at the Oregon Zoo is not only in showing people animals and trying to educate them on the importance of conservation, but we participate in real recovery efforts. For instance, we're one of five facilities that's helping restore the condor population, and I hope in my lifetime to see a condor flying over Oregon. One of the things that's upon us is the campus plan is getting updated in partnership with the Oregon Zoo Foundation, the nonprofit side, and we know that through the work we've done in focus groups and through our last accreditation report with the AZA, we have a lot of work to do, not only to make sure we're taking care of our animals, but also our zoo guests. So we are likely to have a couple of exhibits that we're going to ask for help updating, as well as making sure that we do better with our wayfinding and paths through the zoo and have a real welcoming plaza at the entrance, because right now you basically go from parking lot to you're on a trail. So I'm really invested in making sure that we are able to achieve these investments to keep the zoo, keep it open, and keep it a place that people want to visit. It's the number-one paid tourist attraction in the state. And then finally, the Expo Center. Don't talk a lot about the Expo Center in Clackamas County, because it's not in my district, but I'm actually deeply invested in this project. The Expo Center, for years, has been managed kind of on a cash basis, just to keep the doors open. No long-term vision, no long-term reserves in case the roof collapses. So we actually did an Expos future study, where we examined a lot of development potential. It's valuable industrial land. Right now, it's the end of the MAX line. If and when the interstate bridge gets built, that MAX gets extended, it's the first stop when you come in from Washington State. So we want to make sure that we're honoring the legacy at the Expo Center, where we are going to need to have a cultural recognition, while also doing some redevelopment, so that we can better support sports. The idea is that right now, we have volleyball tournaments that come in. We have other sports that come in. They do a lot of setup. What if we had more ongoing availability, so that we could be a regional and frankly, a West Coast attraction, to bring not professional sports, but youth and club level? So dreaming pretty big, and we are working with a couple of committees and consultants on the feasibility study that should be out in 2024, but really excited for that, because, you know, in Clackamas County, there are a lot of youth engaged in sports who travel up to Washington State. Wouldn't it be great to then be able to turn around and host here? And that's the end of my formal presentation. I know I spoke pretty quickly, and I'm happy to take questions.
That was a great presentation. Thank you very much. And so I have the pleasure of serving with Counselor Lewis on J-PAC and C4, and Counselor Lewis has been an immense advocate for all the communities of Clackamas County on a host of issues, on the supportive housing issue, affordable housing, been a great partner with the city of Lake Oswego in moving our projects forward, as well as on transportation here locally and at the state level, and we're grateful to all of the hard work that you put in on a daily basis, and Counselor Lewis does work very hard. She knows her stuff, and we appreciate that you are a Metro Counselor. Does anyone have any questions for Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Ralph does on Zoom.
Oh, yes, okay. Counselor Ralph.
There. Christine, I can't see you, but thanks for coming. We need to get some cameras that can swivel, because can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So you mentioned Expo Center as a sports facility. I love that idea, especially being the only counselor on the dais that has school-aged children that are participating in sports at the time, so it's something that is very near and dear to my heart. But one thing that is directly related to using that space as a, as a sports facility is the issue of homelessness and vagrancy around, like Delta Park and those areas over there. As I'm sure you know and everybody else knows, Delta Park is used for soccer and other sports, and it's extremely dangerous for young children to participate there, considering what's going on around it. So I don't see how we can explore the option of using Expo Center as a sports facility until we can kind of get Delta Park reined in. Do you have any plans for that?
So in terms of Delta Park, that's the City of Portland property, so I can't speak to what's being done there. I do think that the work that we've done to keep, I mean, there are gates around the Expo Center. We've kept Expo pretty clean. The opportunity to have folks there daily, as opposed to our current weekend show schedule, I think increases my optimism that we would be able to keep the site kind of welcoming, as you're describing it, and free of camping. I do think it's a City of Portland camping ordinance and City of Portland resource issue to get folks the help that they need to find a place, either temporary or permanent, to live.
I understand that, but as Metro, you know, you have lobbying power to get things done that may be important and vital to, you know, the three cities. And so my position or my question is more about priorities. So I don't think that we should be focusing on Expo Center until, as a entire metro area, we can get things under control at Delta Park, right? So, and frankly, I think that if everybody said that's somebody else's problem, then nothing would ever get done, so we all need to kind of work together to get, you know, to clean up that space, because, as you know, sports facilities are in short order or short supply around Metro, especially Lake Oswego, and so we need all the space we can get for our kids to play sports. So I would just advocate and push you to do as much as you can, even though it is a Portland property, to let's focus on that before we focus on Expo Center. But thanks for coming.
Sure, thank you. And that's taken in good spirit. In particular, when I think about what's happening at Delta Park, I think, you know, who would I call, who I put pressure on? It's City of Portland, it's Multnomah County, and it's the Joint Office. And right now, the Joint Office is under some critical review, and our friends at Multnomah County have a corrective action plan issued from us for their underspending and their unalignment. Unalignment? I'm going to make up that word. Their misalignment.
That word works. I understand it.
Yeah. So I think we are starting to use those tools, not only as a neighbor, but frankly, as our role of overseer of the tax dollars. And just a kind of asterisk on that. I think everybody who was lobbying for these corrective action plans assumed they would first be used against Clackamas County, because we had a small program and we had some difficult politics. I just think it's really nice that it's being used not against us, but.
We're the problem. We're the problem.
Thank you.
I'm going to regret saying that later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ralph. Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Counselor Boob.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. I appreciate you coming here. Two years ago, I think, you were here on Zoom.
I think, yes.
Yeah, and I remember that you said that most of the homeless people in our zone, like Counselor Ralph is saying, they're from Oregon, the majority. Is that still right, that the majority of homeless folks are Oregon native or Oregon population?
I don't have the most recent point-in-time count data, but I do believe that the majority would still be from Oregon. I know the media that we've been reading, in particular, our drug laws have been bringing folks. So I do think that what I would use casually to term the magnet myth of if you provide good services, people come to them. I would still hold that providing good services doesn't encourage people to move nationally or statewide. It does encourage people to move regionally. So before Clackamas County had decent services, you might see somebody moving from Clackamas into Portland. You weren't going to see somebody from Idaho move into Portland. I don't have any data. I'm just a person, but I do think that potentially, the drug response or lack of response is potentially creating a little bit of a magnet for a certain population, and we absolutely have to have a serious conversation about how we're going to reform what we're doing on the streets for drugs.
And don't you, and is Metro considering, are there some studies that correlate the use of drug, like when I say the use of, but the legalization of drug with homelessness, is it a correlation? And I don't believe that, but many people, that's the narrative we hear, that because we have free drug use, that's why we have homeless population, that's because we have Measure 110, that we have homelessness. Is there a correlation that, you know, we have studies that Metro has?
I'm not familiar with any study. 110 is too soon for us to have studies. How we measure the homeless population is two ways. One is a point-in-time count, which is annual. The other is a by-name list, where you're working specifically to put somebody's name and some basic information about how to serve them. and some basic information about how to serve them into essentially a spreadsheet. Those two measurements don't get at what you're asking for in terms of a study, so I'm not familiar with.
Yeah. So, and like to finish, you know, I, I honestly think that you folks are doing a good work, like that it's starting to show in Portland, but still, there need to be more effort, that politics has to be out of the way, that people understand that their suffering's on all sides. Like personally, I have problems, like I, it hurts my feeling to see my fellow Americans in the street and suffering. And I don't criticize them because I know it's not their fault alone. It's a society that we judge. So I think Metro and all the other government agencies should do better than just, you know, leaving politics aside and address problems and using data, using scientific ways to solve the problem and not badmouthing, oh, this and that, you know? It's, it's very hurtful to see what is happening to, to our beautiful streets, but also to our beautiful children. Our children are better than the streets, but we forget, we always care about clean streets, but not clean people. And I think, you know, the Metro, I, since you were here, it's maybe my way to say that Multnomah County holding money, I mean, that's very bad. I mean, you know, Clackamas County refusing turnkey is very bad. And both, when you look at it, it's Democrats there, Republicans there. And you see, it's not, it's, the politics is what's killing the nation and it's killing Oregon also. People have to become Oregonian before being Democrat or Republicans. We, many people from Clackamas County were prevented from housing because of people at the county that we know. It's Marshall, it's all those folks who are, and I'm telling their name because they're not Oregonian, they're not working for us, they have other agenda. And the same thing for the Democrat at the, the county, the Multnomah County who are holding money or doing politics. It's shameful and people have to stop that. And I mean, that's my message to county. Yeah, but thank you for your work and for coming here every time, you know? Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm taking it to heart.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Boob. Counselor Winland.
Well, like you, I signed up for a second term and I appreciate you doing that because I will say that you have much more challenging problems in Metro than we do in Lake Oswego. And I want to recognize that. Couple, I've got three questions. One, when is the zoo going to kind of be done with the remodeling? And by the way, we've been there and it is fabulous and your good work is, is showing. Each time we go there, there's more progress. Is there kind of an end date when kind of the construction will be done?
So right now, the construction that's going on is parking lot, which is out of our control. I don't have an end date. I can try and find out. Explore Washington Park is managing that process for us. I will say that within the zoo, there's very little construction right now. Between 50 and 60% of the site was covered through the 2008 bond measure and all of those upgrades finished last year. So the remainder of the site, less than 50%, is what is being considered for a potential future set of projects for the renewal of that bond.
Okay. So everything was done from the first bond?
Everything in the first bond was done.
Right. Convention Center, that's under your purview as well?
Yes, yes.
Are we seeing effects of the national news sort of negativity in bookings for conventions at the Portland Convention Center?
We, we are. And they come in different forms. The Convention Center books out so far in advance, we're not feeling it right now. And frankly, several years from now, we won't be feeling it. I believe last Travel Portland report I saw, our dip is like two years from now where we had expected to be fully booked and frankly, leveraging the new Convention Center hotel to get bigger bookings.
Right.
So we still have some national conventions that are the largest we've ever seen coming. We still have strong business, but the place we were in about a year ago was a real drag on bookings. Travel Portland put together a really concerted effort that included a lot of advertising. I was able to listen to part of a focus group that informed the advertising. I think they'll overcome it. They don't actually have to convince real people to come to Portland. It's a very small, relatively small, several thousand group of convention planners who plan conventions of our size. And I think it's working.
Okay, good. Yeah, send them hazelnuts and Oregon wine and they should just come.
You know what? We do send them things. I think this year, the special treat was perfume that smells like books and roses.
Oh, how about that?
Pals' rose garden. But yeah, we do send them gifts.
Oh, good, good. And then the last question, on the urban growth boundary, we've been hearing, in fact, we're talking about it tonight on the housing production strategies and it's going to be a familiar theme for us for probably way past our lives. There seems to be, what is it, 100,000 short on houses in Oregon? And I know a big chunk of that is the metro area. You talked about population growth and so on, which were the determiners of whether we get urban growth boundary or not. How do you mix the shortage, though, with, we may not have population growth, but we still have underhoused inventory? And when I talk to a lot of builders and developers and people that actually have been around Portland for a long time, one of their criteria is that until we get the urban growth boundary fixed, we may not be able to fix that 100,000 number and whatever portion is Metro. Is that part of the calculation and will that have a positive effect to increase the urban growth boundary?
I don't want to speak for what's in state statute because I'm not looking at it. I don't believe it is one of the factors that is called out in terms of mismatch of population to available housing. I do know that when the infill in House Bill 2001 was introduced, it was given a technical correction so that we can't just wipe away all need with infill. There's a way that we can calculate what could be done infill versus needed new lands. But in terms of the technicality of how needed housing and population mismatch goes into the formula or the urban growth report, I don't have an answer. And that's, I should ask our housing advisors, yeah.
Yeah, because I think, you know, everyone wants to have this big, huge housing production strategy, but I think we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot because we have so many state statutes and all these different elements that go into making a decision that we can't make for the betterment of Oregonians. And to Counselor Boob's point, I, we should be Oregonians first and non-politicians second. And more importantly, we know the need and it seems to be successful metropolitan areas address it without getting into the, into so far into weeds that we've, we've been tangled over the so many years. We got to cut some of that out and actually get a bigger voice, and Metro is a big voice, to get some solutions. And, and I know that we look at Little Lake Oswego and we're like built out, so we're going to be infill. We know that. But there's other communities in the metro area that, that are bursting as well. And in order for us to beat the housing challenge, we're going to have to think outside the, outside the boundary or outside the box, whatever you want to say. But I, I do know that it's going to be part of the conversation for you guys, big part for the next six months. And we need to, I think, have some bolder strategies because I just don't see, I think the expense of building. I even heard down in Bend that they're building almost at, the going rate is between eight, 800 and $1,000 a square foot. We can't, I mean, people can't afford that. I mean, now, these are, you know, homes in nice areas and whatever, but even at half that, I mean, it just, these numbers are just uncanny. And we're just not going to be able to have the housing affordability for the people that want to live here, so.
No, I completely agree. I think that the out-of-the-box thinking that led us to the land swap earlier this year where we were able to use some of the inventory in Damascus that just isn't achievable for the close horizon to get River Terrace 2.0, where we know not only are we getting the number of units, but their plan has built in different levels of affordability. That's the kind of work that we need to do more of.
Right. And when you do go through Bend, they have done some great things of mixed use and a lot of different density projects that I think we could take a good eye at that and say, okay, how do we translate that into some of the areas around here? But anyway, go Oregon, right?
Counselor Winland's being coy about it, but I, I think you hear him saying he can't wait to do consent planning in Stafford with you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Counselor Winland.
Yes, that will be interesting.
All right. Thank you so much, Counselor Lewis. Thank you, colleagues, for the good questions. We appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you.
Trudy has a comment just on that.
Oh, 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 I'm so sorry. Counselor Corrigan.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for coming, Counselor Lewis. I'm just wondering if you can comment about where Metro is with regard to the MARCHS decision?
Can't speak for all of Metro. I think that would be on our attorney, but I have been following it personally and I am interested to see what LCDC does now that it's been deemed a land use decision. I'm not an attorney. I would have said it was land use related. I think the thing that's really important is that you actually see a court uphold a document that includes our kind of readiness assessment. It's the first time that the Metro definition of land readiness has been in a court document and it wasn't questioned. And I think that, that bodes well for our future. It's in our code, it's what we want to do, particularly as we look to this, this cycle. The kind of texture of what helps.
Thank you, Counselor Corrigan. Thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you.
Well, folks, on October 9th, we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lake Oswego, recognizing the profound contributions of Indigenous peoples to the cultural, historical and social fabric of our community. Indigenous Peoples' Day offers an opportunity to reflect upon the rich heritage of Indigenous communities throughout the world. So let us use this day to reflect on our shared responsibility to acknowledge the past and celebrate the present, work together towards a more inclusive, respectful and equitable future for all residents of Lake Oswego. We will have a proclamation that will be signed and posted on our website, recognizing the day, and we thank everyone for joining us in celebrating the culture and contributions of Indigenous people. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. I'll just ask, is there anyone here for public comment? I don't think so. No? Okay. All right, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda today is item 6.1, which is Resolution 23-37. It's a resolution of the City Council authorizing the execution of an amended and restated submerged and submersible land lease agreement between the city of Lake Oswego, the state of Oregon, Department of State lands. We also have item 6.2, which is Work Order 340. It's the McVeigh Pump Station Replacement Contract. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right. That passes unanimously, or passes six, excuse me, 7-0, 7-0. Okay. Now, moving on to council business, first item on the agenda is Work Order 333. This is the feasibility of the Lakeview Boulevard Street and Drainage Improvement Project. And joining us for this presentation, we have Mr. Brodas, the Assistant City Engineer, and Director.
Haika Shipton.
Haika.
Haika.
Haika Shipton. Good to have you here. Thank you for filling in.
Yes, thank you, counsel, for having us. As you mentioned, my name is Stefan Brodas. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. And tonight, I'm joined by Haika Shipton, who is the project manager for this project. Tonight, we'll be presenting the preliminary design for Work Order 333, Lakeview Boulevard Street and Drainage Improvements Project. Haika?
Good evening, Mayor Buck, council members and city staff. I'm going over the agenda real quick and then give you some background, project goals and scope, tell you about the public outreach we've done so far. We'll talk about the pathway extension, curb safety improvements planned, and then summarize and next steps. Background for the project, the project is currently funded under the Capital Improvement Plan. Lakeview Boulevard is classified as a neighborhood collector with about 3,000 ADT, average daily traffic. It's situated between residential homes and the railroad tracks. The project limits are between South Shore Boulevard and Iron Mountain Roundabout. It's about 1.15 miles in length. The current pavement surface is holding up well after a two-inch overlay was placed in 2019. However, the structure beneath the surface is poor and will require reconstruction in the near future. There's currently no stormwater management system underneath the roadway. The corridor is well-used by walkers and cyclists and parking can be a challenge in the summer months when the swim park is open and in full swing. The goals for the project are to reduce stormwater ponding on the roadway, improve access for people walking, rolling and riding. We need to update the existing pathway to be ADA compliant. A new stormwater management system will keep the lake cleaner by filtering the road's stormwater runoff. And we are, we want to provide a newly paved surface and with a complete reconstruction of the roadway. So far, we've had a couple of public meetings. The first one took place in mid-June. We were seeking input from residents along the corridor on any issues they see in their daily lives, other than what we, what the goals already are, stormwater mainly. We had about 30 people attend the first meeting and general feedback we received related to curb safety improvements, parking considerations and a pathway extension. We, then our design engineers sat down and looked at options constrained and feasibility of a design throughout the corridor. And we presented those preliminary design findings in a second public meeting in mid-September. We had about 28 people attend. And general feedback on our design was positive related to stormwater, pavement and parking. Disappointment was expressed with the proposed improvements in the narrow and curved section since we did not propose to extend the pathway through there. I'm handing over to Stefan.
Thank you, Haika. So I wanted to spend a few minutes to talk about that curved section. Most of the time in these design presentations, we talk quite a bit about what we are proposing to do. And in this presentation, I'm going to spend a few minutes to talk about what we're not proposing to do. Because as Haika mentioned, one of our objectives in this project was to add a pedestrian facility on here. And after careful evaluation, it's not going to be feasible through one particular section of this road. And wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about why that is and then also some incremental improvements that we can make to improve upon the existing condition. So when looking through, through this curve section, specifically the section just south of the roundabout, we evaluated it several different ways in trying to get a dedicated pedestrian facility in this area. Two ways in specific that we looked at was one, converting the road to a one-way facility as was requested by some of the citizens in the area. And the other one was by building it along the shoulders of the road. So what I want to talk about first is converting the road to a one-way facility. The appeal- The appeal of this is fairly straightforward. If you take some of the land that is being used as a travel lane right now, you can very easily reallocate that to some sort of pedestrian facility, whether it be a sidewalk, bicycle lane, multi-use path. It's a fairly straightforward process and has obvious benefits that could go to meet that project objective. It also comes with several consequences that ultimately led us to not recommending this alternative. On the screen here, you'll see one possible way a one-way conversion could be implemented. You take Lakeview Boulevard from South Shore through the roundabout, convert it to eastbound only in that area. This has several negative consequences. Essentially, what would be westbound traffic at the roundabout would be taking Upper Drive instead of Lakeview Boulevard, putting a lot of that traffic that would have been on Lakeview Boulevard onto a different facility. And while the property owners on Lakeview Boulevard may appreciate that, I don't think the people on Upper Boulevard would like that option. You're also taking several thousand trips a day and adding a considerable amount of time to that commute. So in this figure that's shown above, any of that westbound traffic that would have been on here, say, from the roundabout trying to get to a property on Lakeview, you're adding anywhere from seven to 10 minutes to that trip, several thousand times a day for the rest of time. So that's quite a bit of time and congestion we're adding to those trips. There's also an environmental component of that that we need to figure, that we need to include in that discussion. There's also an emergency response component of that that needs to be considered in that response time being impacted by this one-way option. So for really all those reasons, there's other ways this could look. You could make Upper Drive a one-way pair, but really, or you could flip this so it wasn't just eastbound one-way, it would be westbound one-way instead. Really, any way you approach this one-way conversion is met with very similar obstacles, challenges, negative consequences. And for those reasons, we are not recommending that we do that. The other possible way to fit a pedestrian facility through this section, if we're not going to reallocate existing public infrastructure, would be to add dimension to the side. And that could be done either through the north and west side of the road, or it could be achieved through the east side of the road. Both of those techniques are met with very similar challenges. If you're familiar with the area, there's an extreme slope issue on both sides. Really, the north and the west side is met with an uphill challenge, and the east side is met with a downslope. And so when we evaluated trying to fit a facility in through here, there's a number of challenges. Private property issues become very visible. There are overhead utility lines that would need to most likely be relocated underground. There is several, several large trees that would need to be removed, and there's the construction of very tall retaining walls in the area. Anywhere in some sections between two and three feet tall, some areas more like 10 feet tall. And then another negative consequence of this would be that the driveways for these properties would need to get reconstructed and made steeper. If you can envision a straight line for these driveways now coming off of the road, insert a short section about five, six feet wide of what sidewalk would be in that instead of at a moderate slope is flat. And so then to make up for that flat section, it's got to be steeper on the front and back into that to make it work. So several of these driveways become very, very adverse as far as slope goes. We're looking at a lot of logistics, logistical issues, a lot of constructability challenges, but very much the easiest way to look at this as being a challenge and infeasible is just the cost tag associated with it. So we're looking at a preliminary cost estimate to construct some sort of sidewalk in this area at about the same cost as the rest of the project, reconstructing the road, constructing a stormwater system, constructing a sidewalk on the north side of the road. Basically, just to get a sidewalk in this section is about the same amount, which obviously we don't have the project budget for. So for those two reasons, both the trying to reallocate the existing lane in a one-way conversion or constructing a sidewalk on the existing shoulder, we found both of those to be infeasible and therefore are not recommending either of those as a part of this project. With that said, and this slide shows where some of those retaining walls and driveways would be affected by trying to construct a sidewalk through there. With that said, we are not proposing to leave this section in the same condition that it is today. There are some smaller-scale improvements that can be made that we feel will have a positive effect on safety in this area, and those come in several different forms. So one such thing is increase signage through the area in addition to pavement markings and striping to implement a form of traffic calming, as well as increase a sense of awareness that it is a difficult and tight corridor through that stretch. In addition to striping and signage, there's also some cleaning up of the right-of-way that can help improve the situation here. In this slide, it shows some pruning, some limbing that may need to be done, some removal of some hedges, and also some removal of some right-of-way barriers, such as these boulders shown in this picture, that can clean up, provide a little bit more shoulder through this area, a little bit more of a refuge for people that are walking in the travel lane through this section.
I'm going to summarize what we are proposing now with our current design. We are proposing a new stormwater infrastructure and treatment. We propose to rebuild the first part of the pathway between South Shore and the swim park to make it ADA compliant, and then extend this pathway from the swim park all the way to the good eneasement. We're making curve and safety improvements with improved signage and striping. We will trim some vegetation, remove some boulders and a tree also for improvements there in the narrow section and curve to provide a little bit of a shoulder on the side. We keep all the existing parking. We will be making some improvements to the Lake Grove Swim Park area by adding a crosswalk and making some ADA improvements in front of the park, the entrance. We're hoping to have the opportunity to add a few trees along the straight section of Lakeview Boulevard. It will have to be determined where those would need to be placed. And then we will be reconstructing the entire roadway section and provide new fresh pavement. We're seeking approval to go ahead with this proposed design, and if we get this approval from you, our next steps would be to finish our 60% design this fall, begin right-of-way and railroad coordination early 2024, continue with final design throughout 2024, and then anticipated construction would be 2025. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Shipton, Mr. Brodas. What is, will you remind us, what is the budget for this project?
The budget is funded through both the street and storm fund for a grand total of $8 million.
Okay, and we feel pretty confident. ARPA.
ARPA.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Just seeing that the project's out a couple years, we feel, we'll have the final numbers next year, the project estimate.
At this point of preliminary design, we feel confident with the scope relative to the budget. Yes.
Okay. One question, and I really, this is a big project, and it's going to be a great project for Lakeview Boulevard. Obviously, immense stormwater issues during any time it rains and heavily used by pedestrians, not just because of the swim park, but it's along the whole South Shore corridor, along connecting to Iron Mountain, Upper Drive. I mean, it's just an area where a lot of people walk. And it is unfortunate that, you know, there's really no feasible way to put in that pedestrian infrastructure along that corner because that is the most treacherous, of course, stretch of the whole length. And you always, you know, make a sign-on across as you go around there. Is there any way, and we talked about when we took the walking tour of the area, but to add that kind of tactile feature to the road like you see when you're driving on the interstate and you start to, you know, veer off the side, and you hit those tactile things and that, you know, gets you to pay attention, but something that would alert drivers to be like, you know, if they're doing what they're not supposed to be doing and looking at their, you know, screen or whatnot, to wake up and pay attention because that is, you know, with a reduced speed limit. Well, I think it's already a reduced speed limit around the corner of the 15, but is there a possibility of doing something tactile on the roadway?
Yes, and that's included in this package of, you know, curve safety improvements. We talk about signing and striping, and you'll notice here, you mentioned speed limit of 15 in the area. We're actually proposing to have an advisory speed of 10 through there considering the limited visibility and the sharp turn. But some of those tactile warnings, there's others in that same realm that is being considered as part of this whole package of smaller-scale solutions to help improve the safety through the area.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Counselor, any questions?
Counselor Raf, how does hand raise? I don't know.
Counselor Raf.
Yeah, more of a comment. Are we going to do a deliberation in this, Mayor?
No, well, go ahead with your comment.
Okay. I just didn't think this was even going to be deliberate.
Yeah, no, no, thank you.
Whatever. Okay. Where do I, okay, so honestly, I'm not sure how this project even moves forward considering we have roads all through the city in smaller neighborhoods, less wealthy neighborhoods, that have roads that haven't been improved in 30-plus years. But we're going to spend $8 million on a road that does drain and is much more drivable than many other roads in our neighborhoods. So my question is, how can we possibly prioritize this project when we have so many other roads and neighborhoods that have been derelict and left to rot for decades? I would implore all city councils to push back on this project so that we can look deeper into spending this money more appropriately on bringing some of our more significantly dilapidated roads up to at least par level before we start looking at the road that fronts the most expensive houses in all Lake Oswego.
Okay, thank you. Would you want to speak to the history of how this project came up to the?
So I can respond to some of that. While the road itself appears and has a good surface of pavement, that was done in 2019 as a response to a couple of things. We knew that with the Boones Ferry Road project, there would be quite a bit of traffic that was diverted off of the Boones Ferry Road corridor, just finding another route that wasn't on a construction corridor. We also knew that this project, the one that was presented tonight, was on the five-year horizon. The road condition itself at that time, going back to 2018, was very, very poor, very poor. And so we did, as Haika mentioned earlier in the presentation, we did two inches of new asphalt on that as a means to bridge the gap. And so while when you drive that road today, it is in very good condition and is very smooth, it is built on a house of cards underneath that, and that, not that it's dangerous anyway, so I should be careful with my metaphor, but in that it is not, when you typically drive a road in that surface condition, that road probably has 30 to 40 years left on it typically. Not the case on Lakeview Boulevard. That road, we fully expect, will deteriorate much faster than a similar road of that same strong, smooth condition on the surface because of how poor the base is underneath that.
That's a great, I appreciate you explaining that, and I understand that, but how do you explain that to neighborhoods whose roads are literally falling and breaking apart into their driveway? The rain, the drain, there is no drainage, and when the rain falls, it pours into their basements through their driveway. You cannot tell me that Lakeview Boulevard is the highest priority of road improvements that we have in Lake Oswego to spend that money. I cannot support this, and I will not support this until we start looking deeper into every other road we have in the neighborhood, in our city, and making sure that all our citizens have quality roads that their houses front on.
Are you talking about Blue Heron?
I'm talking about Blue Heron and a lot of other roads.
Okay, just want to clarify.
There are residents, though, that have water running into.
By the way, if you would like to, if you would like to do Lakeview, then do the first half and one half of it like you did the Blue Heron Road. I understand. Let's have an equal playing field for all the roads. We need to make sure that everybody's taken care of, and it's not just Blue Heron, Mayor. You know that there's a lot of other roads that are not taken care of, and that's all I'm going to say. I hope the rest of the council supports this decision to put this project out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Raf. I mean, I do think we've been of ways with this. We have approved this project along the way, including with the ARPA, and it's been on the CIP for some time, and there is a drainage, a very real drainage problem on Lakeview. Not that Lakeview is the only street in town that has a drainage problem, but it's a massive project that we've been able to fund, and then we'll be able to continue to fund other projects as we go forward. Okay. Counselor Afkan.
Is the drainage violating any laws?
You can have streets without stormwater facilities on them. You just have to face the negative consequences that come with that. And so that's what one of the objectives of this project is, is to try to eliminate those negative consequences that come from a road that doesn't have a stormwater management system. And those consequences are basically two things. One is flooding in the streets when it doesn't have a place to go, and the other one is inundating homes when the runoff sheds from the right-of-way and doesn't go into catch basins and pipes and treatment facilities to outfall intentionally and just sheds, follows the natural topography of the land. So no, to answer your question, no, but that is, one of the objectives of the project is to address those consequences.
Did I see one of the benefits of this project, cleaner lake?
Yes, by way of stormwater treatment. So currently now, stormwater would run, hit the road. It would pick up contaminants that are in the road that are dropped from cars and other things, and it would drain into the lake just through natural topography, through this system, through a series of catch basins, pipes, but most importantly, a stormwater filter system immediately prior to outfall into the lake. The stormwater runoff will be cleaner after this project by a significant amount than it is today.
Okay. I do agree with Counselor Raf. So I'm trying to justify why we would want to do this and get all the information. But at the same time, I don't think this is the forum for prioritization of the projects. I believe that that has been in other forums. So if we have an objection to that prioritization, we shouldn't be approaching you with those challenges. So I do agree with Counselor Raf that maybe we need to look at the project priorities a different way. But at the end of the day, at some point, we're going to have to do this project because of the challenges that has caused so far. Thank you, Ms. Mc.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Afkan. Counselor Bro.
Yes, I mean, I'm always, you know, in solidarity with my brother Raf. And, you know, I live on that road. And you know, I, I live on that road, but like the other side of our road needs a project like from Bryant going to, you know, there's no, there's, it's a dangerous place to walk because I walk every day to work and, but it also doesn't mean that we are leveling things from the, that all the roads are bad, so we don't fix any. I mean, it's not reasonable also, you know, I mean, this project had been in the making for a long time. I even think before us, you know, so now that it's here, what Councilor Raf is saying is very true, like the, we have to, and we've done it last time we were doing the TSP, like that we had to add some stuff. We had to remove some project, we have to add. And I think that's the place where Councilor Raf has to talk and advocate because even if you remove this money, projects that are not under TSP for now, we cannot fund them because like, I mean, we have to follow also the city way of government of doing things. And I agree that there are a lot of places in Lake Oswego that needs, and we talk about it. It's something I can throw there that we need a bond to fix the roads in Lake. It's not this money that can fix the thing that, the eight million, even if you take it, it won't fix anything else. So rather than sabotaging this project, we should like move forward and do this project and make a assessment of what we need to fix, which Director Rooney is always saying. We are a city that lives in the body of a village. We need to put a bond, have a lot of money and fix our roads. The money coming from system development charges or ARPA or stuff that cannot solve this problem, my brother. So I think we need to be kind of reasonable and like advocate for everybody, you know. And it's very hard to say, oh, the rich people, it's not fair to say that. I don't think this is what is right. That's not that they're the rich people. We can talk about the lake. You live on the lake. There are things what we do on the lake that we are not doing somewhere else and no one is saying the lake. So it's not fair to think that our people are targeting the rich areas and fix them and leave what is not rich, which should not be that way in Lake Oswego. So I believe that we need to move on, on this project, but we need to fix what is happening in our city. Now, on my house, like on my neighborhood, on other neighborhood, we need to fix the infrastructure, but it's not these eight million dollars. So for me, we need to move and let staff continue their work.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Boop, uh, Councilor Wendlin, then Councilor Raf, I see your hand.
I, just to echo those comments, uh, I, I think a lot of your analysis, and this is coming from our Department of Engineering, which always has a formula for determining things. They're non-political, uh, they don't care who lives where. They do look at that we, we have a, um, a high volume of traffic on this road. And I think that was one of the determiners and it's one of, uh, I walk on that street and have for 15 years almost every day. And I will say that the, um, the precondition before it got the quick little, and I would say just some frosting over the top, it was horrible conditions. And on a rainy day, you can see floods going across the street and that's going into the lake and, and bring, uh, doing, doing things to the ecosystem that we need to have cleaner water. I agree with Councilor Raf that we have other priorities in the city that we need to address too. And maybe the bold action of this council needs to look, maybe as a goal for 2022 is to get our heads around it. I will say that we had a big influx and the last presentation on our pavement index told us that we are heading, we got it up and we're going to be heading down until we do something with it, with the available funds that we have. So I do believe that we need to, as a council, have that as a goal for 2024 to analyze and look at, at the valuation and the priority of this city on pavement. And I will tell you, almost without any question, the most positive comments I get are when we pave a road and people are super happy about that, especially when it's their road or one that they're on. And I don't know what it is about smooth pavement, but it sure gives a brightness to your day and people are happier. And so maybe that's how we turn on the happy button in Lake Oswego is we pave more roads and figure out how to do it. So anyway, but I'm with you, Aaron. I wish we had more money to fix your, your street and all the other ones too.
Yes, and you know, and that's a good point, Councilor Wendlin. As much as people do love the, the paved streets, we've also heard an immense amount of folks coming forward wanting to ensure there's more pedestrian safety investments. And you know, Lakeview Boulevard is a very, as you said, very well walked with a dangerous corner that we can't even fully mitigate. And we have to, you know, the, I think the team here has come up with real creative solutions to mitigate that corner. But even providing that walkability on the rest of the street is a very dangerous place to walk. Those of us who do walk it regularly know, and it's a high traffic area as well. And I saw Director Rooney nodding her head, recognizing that the, the genesis of this project goes back many, many years, predating this council, she's giving me fingers to show, five years plus. And, and we've continued to advance this project over these past several years, starting with the ARPA dollars, finding ways to, uh, to leverage it. But it certainly doesn't mean there are other projects. But I do appreciate the pedestrian safety aspect of this and think it will make a, a great difference on this big thoroughfare. Councilor Raf, then Councilor Afkan.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, thank you, Councilor Afkan, Boop, my bro, uh, Councilor Wendlin. I agree, I agree with you all. I agree on the priorities of why we pave streets. It's not a loss on me. However, Mr. Brodus, do you mind putting the objectives of the, of this project back on the screen? At one slide. Mr. Brodus, Mr. Brodus.
Yeah, we'll switch screens and then we'll have to come back to you, Aaron, just one moment.
We can see the, uh.
We can see the screen.
We can see the project goals.
Can't hear Aaron, it's.
Oh, we can't hear him.
Right, so.
Oh, okay, okay. So we're going to have to go back to Councilor Raf on the other, on the Zoom.
Technical difficulties.
Okay, you're back. So we looked at the, the slides, now you're back.
Okay, um, so Councilor Afkan, yes, right, you do Lakeview because any, uh, oversaturation of the, of the road goes in the lake. Guess what? Blue Heron Road, any oversaturation of, of the road goes directly in the lake, same issue. All those objectives that they listed is why they're doing Lakeview can be applied to almost every street in the city as to why they need to be repaved as well. Walkability, blue, roads like Blue Heron Road are part of the infrastructure to getting our kids safely to schools, just as much as a priority as Lakeview. I would also say that, um, uh, where's my note here? I'm not saying that we don't fix everything. I'm suggesting that we need to have a very different way to prioritize what streets we do and when we do them. So, um, we need to, and I know I'm losing this fight here. I had no intention of changing the direction of this project. I'm making it, I'm trying to make a point. I think my point came across and we have a lot of roads that we need to take care of. And to Councilor Wendlin's point, which I'll say, I say this all the time, our number one job as councilors is to pave roads. Because that's the only thing really that we can do to make people happy. And so, but the problem is, right now, over the last several years, and maybe even in previous administrations, there, we've been leaving people out of that happiness scale because we haven't been able to take care of their roads. And it's been decades. We have to get on this. And it's not such as about Blue Heron Road, it's about all those ancillary, ancillary roads in the city that have been county roads or we don't, they're so dilapidated, it takes two, it's too costly to get it done. We have to get these done and we have to make a team effort to reprioritize these smaller streets so that we have neighbors that are happy about the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Councilor Raf, we hear you. Councilor Afkan.
Mr. Mayor and the Assistant City Engineer, um, I need a clarification. Is the motion before us to direct staff to proceed with the final design? Only, there's no construction, right? Just design it and the construction being in 2025, we can always make a different decision, but we can now finish the design, right? So clarification, is the motion to move with finalizing the design? Or is it, and construction?
We'll approve the construction.
Yes, the, the motion before you is to approve, uh, is requesting approval to move forward towards final design. Construction would be approved as a part of an approval of a construction contract as part of a bidding effort as is typical process, yes.
But Councilor Afkan, we're not going to move forward with this project to only put the kibosh on it down the road. That's a waste of staff.
No, what I'm trying to do is move the project forward. We, we still have two years before the construction starts and, but we have to have a design. So we can do the design and if the prioritization changes, we still have the design. We don't throw designs away. So we still make progress and if Councilor Raf or other councilors want to reprioritize projects, we can do it later.
Well, I just, that's not a good way to do things. We have all the community engagement work that's been done, you know, with the current people that live there as we, you know, we have the staff here that these, these projects move forward in a fluid way, not a start and stop motion, and then we would have no other project to do. And we need, we have the funding in place to do the project. It also has to be spent, especially the ARPA related portion of it, there's a timeline to that. So this is a commitment on the council to move forward. It's a, it's a continuation of our commitment to move this project forward. That is just not a responsible way to do any kind of planning in the city.
If, if one had to, we could, well, if one had to, we could not approve the contract. You're right, there is a.
Yeah.
A go, no-go, I suppose you could say, but it would be a tremendous expense.
If this council is not planning on approving the contracts, we should not move the final design forward.
Right, correct.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
Move to direct staff to proceed with final design of the Lakeview Boulevard Street and Drainage Improvement Project.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes six, one. Thank you, Mr. Brodus, Ms. Shipton, appreciate it, okay. Okay, let's take a quick five-minute recess.
Yeah, I would love that.
Okay, we are back in order. And next item of business is item eight point two. This is consideration of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-six, a resolution of the city council adjusting our solid waste collection service rates. Running this project for the city team has been Mr. Hooper who we have here tonight, deputy city manager, running the meeting, standing in for Ms. Bennett. And we also have Mr. Bell with Chris Bell and Associates and Mr. Jordan with Republic Services here. So I'll turn it over to all of you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I would also like to recognize a few people that are in the crowd as well. We have Travis Comfort, who's the municipal contract administrator, and then Cindy Rogers, who's the municipal sales manager for Republic Services. And then, as the mayor introduced, we also have the general manager of Republic Services with us here tonight, Jason Jordan. And then Chris Bell, who the city has hired to do a rate analysis. As you would recall, last year, about, about a year ago, a new franchise was given to Republic Services. And in that franchise, the franchise is good for 10 years. And in it, there is a mechanism that allows for annual rate increases at the request of Republic Services. And they requested it. So as a result, we've hired Chris Bell of Bell and Associates to do the analysis. And he's here to give a report and to, to talk about all that. Without further ado, please take it away, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. Thank you for having me here tonight. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to work again with the, with the city regarding setting up and updating collection rates. The discussion that we're going to have here tonight is, is based on work that we done last year and the year before. And as, as Mr. Hooper was saying, this has kind of become a regular process. In most jurisdictions throughout the Portland metropolitan area, there's an annual rate review where the haulers submit the, the report to the jurisdiction. It gives the jurisdictions an idea of how profitable that there are in the collection areas and also the materials collected and how, how successful they are in meeting the city's objectives. The disposal rates were last adjusted January twenty twenty-three. And you know, it was about this time last year that we met with city council to review those rates. And if you recall, and if you don't, here they are, rates were increased by five point three percent for residential across the board. The most popular being a thirty-five gallon cart, which about, I believe fifty, fifty-seven percent of the, the customers within Lake Oswego subscribe to that level of service. And commercial rates were averaged, increased about ten, ten point six percent. And part of that increase, if you recall, was to implement the new food waste collection program to provide food waste generators ability to divert those materials from the landfill. And the drop box haul fee, we increased by sixteen dollars and a roll-off compacted by twenty-nine dollars per haul. And those were to adjust for the, the increased cost of providing that service. The adjusted rates that were submitted for twenty twenty-two are up here. And as you can see, they're, they're around five percent for the composite. Roll cart was a little bit lower than expected, whereas container was a little bit higher than expected. And again, this was last year's results. This doesn't take in consideration the new rates that were implemented on January first. And so one of the, the three things that we looked at this year, because when we looked at rates last year, we adjusted and we tried, tried to bring those up to, set those up at, at a cost of service, there is some small level of subsidization from the commercial for that, for that food waste program. But there are three significant costs that are, that, that Republic is incurring this year, as well as all the other haulers within the Portland metropolitan area. And that's driver wages. And the cost this year, as well as in the upcoming years, is escalating for, for commercial drivers. They're hard to come by these days. And because they're hard to come by, they expect to be paid a lot. And so there was a, a, a new contract that Republic Services signed. And it's the second contract in the area. The first one was signed by waste. And typically, i- if you're aware of the way the union works, they take the first one and then there's a second one. And they kind of all rise up to match that, that rate. And so typically, you'll see those rates in other jurisdictions are going to also be increased by around seven percent. Metro wage, or excuse me, metro disposal has increased every year for the last few years. This year it went up a little bit higher than we anticipated last year. If you recall, we expected around seven percent based on information that was submitted to Metro, where they were estimating that their annual increases would be about seven percent. We're a little bit higher this year than expected. And so we're passing through that or proposing to pass through that increase in disposal. And then the other aspect of, of cost that's significant, and i- it's happening, and it's, it's the cost of co-mingled recycling, processing. And it's not necessarily the cost of, of the, of the processing itself, but it's the value of the material that's left there that's sorted. And so typically, if the cost to sort materials a hundred dollars enters a value to the material after they're done sorting, that value buys down that cost. Well, over the last few years, as the economy's been softening, the, the demand for those recycled materials has slowed up. And the offset is an increase in co-mingled recycling. So those are the three primary known and measurable costs that we took into consideration when we proposed the adjustments that we're going to propose, submit to you tonight. And the other thing too, like I said, you know, the metro tipping fee this year was higher than anticipated. The one thing to expect is in the upcoming years, you can see this progression of rates, assuming the seven point seven percent as metro was hoping to have this year, that you're seeing about a dollar increase in the rates every year, just based on those, those increases in disposal alone. So that's something to think about. That, that, that's a cost that's outside the, the hauler's control. And then again, here's the impact of material markets. Two things that also consider, in Oregon, we have the bottle bill. And most of your bottles and cans are diverted from the recycling. So the majority of the material that's set out on a curb is fiber, it's paper, cardboard. And this has a significant impact on the value that's collected. And plastic and aluminum steel are a smaller amount. And then the other piece too is garbage. And people put garbage in the recycling for a whole host of reasons, either they don't know. They're hoping that material is recyclable and it's not, or they could be putting in there because they just want to get rid of it. And they've ran out of room in their, in their garbage cart. So these are the, these are the primary drivers in what make your curbside mix valuable or in some cases, less valuable. So this right here is, is a depiction of the three proponents or three components of your, of the rates that we're proposing. And this is set at, at the cost of service at the current rate, where your labor and medical increases are approximately, or in this case, exactly eighty-five cents per customer per month for the residential, eighty-five cents for the increase for the thirty-five gallon cart for disposal. And recycling processing is fifty-four cents. Now, on, on the garbage disposal, the way I set these rates was based on the volume of the size of the container. And again, the smaller containers have less waste, the bigger containers have more. And so it varies a little bit differently with the commercial rate, because a commercial business can either have a three yard for garbage. They may have a, a roll cart for recycling or they may have a, a five yard cart for, for, for recycling. It just varies. Either way, looking at the cost of service for your most popular service, we're looking at or proposing a six point two percent increase on the current rate effective January first. And for the three yard container, again, a very popular service, around six point seven percent. One of the other alternatives to take, to consider is looking at a flat rate for the increase in residential. This table right here shows you the variance in rates. Because the way the rate is set, and because the rate is a little bit lower for the twenty gallon cart, the increase as a percentage of the rate would be a little higher on a twenty gallon cart compared to the sixty-five gallon cart. But you can see that the labor and the recycling processing fee are the same. The difference here is the disposal. The other alternative is to set that rate for residential service at a six percent rate across the board. And the example I have here is for the twenty, thirty-five and sixty gallon cart. There's also a ninety gallon cart, I didn't put that in there, but there are people and businesses within the city that do subscribe to that level of service.
Mr. Bell, and these are monthly rates, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, correct. So with that, with that proposal, are there any questions from, from council?
Thank you very much for your work. Just as a reminder to everyone, you know, when we entered into this last franchise agreement with Republic, we kind of agreed to this new method of analyzing the rates, which in a way is a benefit, especially given the, the increases that metro's been imposing. On an annual basis, this keeps things a little bit steadier, you know, for our rate payers, instead of coming to them every five years with a, or, or, you know, few years with a massive increase. I mean, the cost of operating the system and the cost of metro's tip fee does continue to, to increase. And of course, as part of our agreement, we need to be responsive to that while also keeping the rate somewhat predictable and reasonable for our, for our members. Mr. Bell, would you mind putting back up this other slide with the even six? So you see, I, I did ask, you know, Mr. Bell, in the past, to, to prepare this, and I do appreciate it, in the past now, couple of years, we've worked to kind of keep that twenty gallon cart rate as low as possible, recognizing that it's not a popular cart, but a lot of seniors especially use the cart, live by themselves. And recognizing that these annual increases can be difficult on folks working to, to keep that cart as low as possible by spreading the rate out. Otherwise, you see that the twenty gallon cart faces kind of the steepest increase as a, as a percentage. And so I do appreciate you presenting this, a flat six percent option. And this is how we adopted the rates last year and the year before that as well, which I think has been, has been great. Okay, questions, Councilwoman?
Oh, on metro fees, they went up eleven point two instead of seven or whatever that you were projecting. They've been seven, seven point seven, like, oh, that's future. Have they always been this big of an increase?
No. No, this is, this is.
Why so much?
It's a combination of a couple of things. It's, it's, it's a new collection or new, excuse me, a new, a new agreement they had with one of the, one of the facilities to expand operations, expand services. The other piece is, a lot of this is tied into the solid waste management plan that metro has. There's a portion of that, that's, that, that rate or this rate is used to support that. And there, there's other questions to support surrounding that, why is, and.
So let me get more to a direct question.
Yes.
Is, is the metro number just purely going for the residential and the commercial collection of garbage? Or are there side projects that they're funding that through these rates?
Well, there, there's a combination of a couple of things. There's, there's the transfer station operation, which is a component of this rate. There's also the, the, the excise tax, and that goes straight to the general fund for metro. And I believe that's around thirteen dollars a ton, thirteen. And then there's the regional system fee, which is supposed to support everything else, all the, all the plans and programs through metro. But a portion of that's also funding the transfer station operation. And so metro is, is hoping to get that clarified, to get that cleared up this year. That was one of the, the reasons why the, the increase was higher than expected, because they're trying to true up that cost of operation, of operating the system.
Then how much is that as a total cost of, of our rates? In other words, how much is, is that a big chunk of your cost?
Yeah, actually, Mayor Buck, council, it's great to see you, everybody again. I think it's been a year since I've been here, so it's wonderful to be back. And to answer your question is, disposal is the highest cost component of our operations. And that's been pretty consistent through the years. It ranges anywhere between thirty-eight to forty-one percent of our operations. So when you see an eleven point six percent increase in disposal, proportionally, that's a pretty big hit to the, the overall cost of the operations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Just, I have two additional questions. You know, one of the changes we made in the last franchise agreement, which was a positive one, was we extended the discount that we have worked into the agreement for the Lake Oswego School District to all kind of educational institutions within the town. I'm just curious, how has that, has that been, been rolled out to those other, how were they made aware of that discount?
Yeah, great, great question, Mayor Buck. We double-checked that today because we wanted to make sure that was the case. The list that we were provided when we updated the franchise and renewed the rates to extend to the private schools, with the exception, I think there were two containers that were missed. All the other ones are on the fifty percent reduced rate. The one thing, and I think that we'll work with staff as we move forward, and it's just a little bit of the housekeeping pieces, where in the previous franchise, that information, it was, was language within that franchise. And I think what, what we did with the new one is we pulled that out, I think with the intention of roll that into the administrative rules as well on the rates. And so what we'll probably ask staff to work with is, as we do this every year, just to make sure we have an updated school list that's provided. So as, as we roll out the rates and as we evaluate that, we have the most current list. But we audited it today with our billing supervisor and, and like I said, with the exception of two containers, we are good. And so hopefully, we've seen a benefit of that.
And the, but the two containers that were missed, they'll go back and get.
Yeah, so our, our plan is we were going back, we're refunding the difference.
Great.
And moving forward, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you for that. And then my second question is about the modernization of Oregon's recycling system that program is underway. How will that impact us going forward?
Oh, great question. You're not here, I don't think you have enough time tonight for that, us. But I would say we are working with staff. I think that there's still a lot of misnomers around what this is. I think that there's still a lot of misnomers around what this is going to be. Obviously, the definition of the PROs and how that system is going to play really leads us in a bit of a quandary about what the cities are applying for, what role we're going to play. To my understanding, too, the PROs are listed as, should be a nonprofit. So how do we, as a, as a for-profit organization, support that? My, my initial review of this, as we've worked with our staff, is I think because we've seen the impact of the recycling market crash from 2018, and we're seeing some of the work, is we've already seen some of that cost built in. I wish I could give you a real definitive answer, but the funding piece and what the PRO processes look like is still under construction, so to speak, and that's something I think we'll have to bring back. Our intent was to actually come back with an update towards the end of this year, beginning of Q1, as we have some more answers to what role we're going to play as the hauler in this.
Okay. It's a big change that's coming down-
A large change.
It may impact what we put in the commingled bin, may even temporarily limit what we can put in-
It will, yeah. Just to give a, write a little bit of an overview, it's right, a universal recycling standard of, here is the material that's accepted across, you're going to have extended producer responsibility. So the manufacturers, those that are producing that material, obviously will pay into the fund, and then you'll have PROs that will actually manage that program based on a material type. And then they're going to oversee our intent as a state to, right, to recover, reuse, recycle that material out of that, the stream. So yes, it is a big change, and I think that for the majority of Oregonians, that's a great thing, because I think there's been a lot of confusion about what can be and what can't be put into the recycling. So having universal standards, great, but there's a lot of questions around, as Chris had talked about, and you kind of see that, the volatility of the commodities and the markets, just even the end markets of having a responsible way to recycle those is probably the biggest challenge that we have.
Right. One of the, one of the challenges of that program, when they first rolled it out, there was, there was the, the hope that the recycling, the, the, the cost that would be charged to the ratepayer would be zero for, for recycling. Just based on the work that's been, I don't see that happening. Just, just the way, the way they've structured the pricing for the MRFs, because there's a contamination fee, and they're still working on what that's going to be. And there's still some questions on, you know, who's going to qualify for that? Is it going to be a full MRF? Is it going to be a limited MRF? Is it going to be a facility attached to a mill? Is it going to be a limited sewer facility? What's going to be that impact? And then what's going to be the, the impact on the market, the market volatility fee, which is supposed to supplement that difference between what the market is giving versus what the cost of processing is? And the hope was that the ratepayer would see zero, that the hauler would pick up the material, take it to a facility, the facility wouldn't charge them. Nobody really can tell you whether that's going to happen or not. There's just, there's, as Jason was saying, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of changes. You know, Canada's has, has this, this program, but it's, it's at a federal level. This is at a state level, and there's still a significant amount of questions that need to be asked, answered.
Okay. Well, I know that's, I appreciate that, and this outside, of course, is the scope of what we're considering here tonight. But DEQ is out doing a roadshow on this whole thing, and so we'll, you know, keep it top of mind, and we appreciate your, you know, insights into this going forward.
Keep asking questions for DEQ. They like questions.
It's very, it's confusing. Okay, was there any questions from our, okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and make this motion, then, that we adopt Resolution 23-36, the caveat that we approve it with that 6% across-the-board change for the residential roll carts.
Second.
And second from counsel.
Could I just bring up a point of order? Ellen Osnack, your assistant attorney. Because the amendments to Exhibit A, which is the rates, are, are going to be changed, even though it's not substantially, there are a number of items, and Acting City Manager and I just very quickly tried to interlineate and make those amendments. But if you would be open, I've asked Anthony if you could direct staff to make the amendments consist, make your motion be direct staff to make the amendments to the exhibit and then put it on the consent agenda for next time, just so, since this is an ordinance, we, it will be very clear.
Okay. So let me retract-
Don't move.
Retract the motion. Okay, so, new motion.
Yeah.
Counselor, win then.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so does everyone understand that? We're going to, okay, okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And then, Council, Mayor Buck, may, if I may, just have two public service announcements for you. So first off, of the 26 employees that, that service Lake Oswego, I want to make sure that they, want to make it clear that we want to thank you, we want to thank the residents, we want to thank the businesses. They would not let me live that down if I didn't have the opportunity to publicly say that with the, the hard work that they have. And then also, just to let council know, on October 21st, we've partnered with Toys for Tots. So I know that we have biannual bulky waste days, and we have that as an opportunity with WRI, Willamette Resources, that's located in Wilsonville. The management team is hosting a Toys for Tots bulky waste drive that Saturday from, we're looking at from 9:00 to 1:00. That's open to the residents of Lake Oswego, to Walton, and Wilsonville as well. And it's going to be run primarily out of all of our salaried management staff, but we wanted to provide another opportunity for the surrounding area that's not included in rates, because again, this is our volunteer time, but we wanted to make that as an announcement that on top of the opportunities that the council and the city provides the residents, we're adding one more in there, just as a thank you, and hopefully to raise some Toys for the Tots in the holiday season. So just wanted to get that out there, I appreciate, let me get the PSA for you.
We appreciate those announcements. And we haven't forgotten about the electric garbage truck either.
It's on its way.
Very good.
Yes. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And every one of your drivers always waves and is so happy. And I, I will say that when we, and every Tuesday morning is my time when I get to wave, and he waves every morning, even if it's pitch black, and it's, it's, it's good.
We take a lot of pride in that, so appreciate that.
Also, make sure you take care of your drivers during the holidays.
We do, yes, thank you, yes.
I meant like residents.
Oh, yes, they, yes.
All that extra glass lifting, right, Counselor? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on our agenda, we move into the public hearing. We have for consideration Ordinance 2930. This is an ordinance of the city, council declaring the withdrawal of territory consisting of .44 acres located at 5022 Upper Drive in the city of Lake Oswego from the Lake Grove Water District. And joining us tonight is Mr. Paul Espy.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have this evening before us a request for the property at 5022 Upper Drive to be withdrawn from the Lake Grove Water District.
Oh, I'm so sorry, too. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Espy, my fault. We are going to start with a review of the hearing procedures by Ms. Osnack.
Thank you, Mayor Buck. I, I too was a little late on that. So now is the time, so for a public hearing, on Ordinance 2930, withdrawing one parcel at 5022 Upper Drive Tax Lot 21E188A00400 from the Lake Grove Water District. And the public hearing process will begin with a presentation by Mr. Espy. Testimony will then be received from the public if any wish to testify. And following the, I mean, I'm sorry, there are 10 minutes for representatives of recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations, and five minutes per individual. The time limits will not include time taken up by questions from council or responses to such questions. At this point, I'll ask the council if there are any ex-party contacts, bias, or financial conflicts of interest.
No.
And I'm assuming there are heads shaking on Zoom from Councilors Corrigan and Raff. Hearing none, there are no conflicts, and now we can begin your presentation, Mr. Espy. Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney Osnach, I appreciate it. At their meeting on July 18th, the city council adopted Resolution 2327 initiating the withdrawal of one parcel consisting of about 4.43 acres from the Lake Grove Water District. This property was annexed back in 2018 and was retained in the LGWD because it was basically in the LWD, LGWD boundary, and that's normally what we do in that situation. The plan and zone designation is still the same. It's currently under the jurisdiction of the city and is Zone WLGR 2.5 Town Home Residential. There are no sensitive lands on the property. And the city initiated the withdrawal of, or from the LGWD because this property is part of a unified development plan by Habitat for Humanity. And it consists of five vacant tax lots to construct 23 townhomes. All these lots, excepting the subject lots, are served by the city. So since it was found that the property could be served by both service providers, it just made more sense for, and it was more efficient for the city to provide, for the city to provide the water service instead of Lake Grove Water District. And so therefore, staff finds that the proposed district withdrawal meets the state statutes and Metro code requirements. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed withdrawal and enact the ordinance. And all the findings are in the, in the report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Espy. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Espy? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing, then, and ask if we have anyone here who would like to testify on this ordinance.
No, mayor.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move to enact Ordinance 2930.
Counselwoman.
Second.
Counsel verdict, is there any discussion? Do Counsel Raff or Counsel Corrigan have any? No, no? Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Espy.
You're welcome.
For item 9.2, we just had a, just slight error in the reporting, so we're going to bring that back at a future date. We're going to remove that from the agenda, if that's okay with everyone. Item 9.2, yeah, annexation, okay. We'll see you at a future date.
Okay.
Annex that property.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Espy. So with that, we're going to move on to our next hearing, which is on Ordinance 2934. This is an ordinance adopting the 2023 Housing Needs Analysis as part of the comprehensive plan. And we welcome Mr. Olson, our long-range planning manager. And Mr. Olson, you have some folks joining you as well?
Yes, I brought company today. So we're just pulling up an additional chair, so that there's room for everyone.
Mayor Buck, would you like to review the hearing procedures while they're getting settled?
Thank you very much.
Now is the time set for a public hearing on Ordinance 2935, which is 2023 Housing Needs Analysis Update and an amendment to the comprehensive plan. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by the staff, and then we will have 10 minutes for representative of recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations, and five minutes per individual. Time limits will not include time taken up by council, by questions from council or responses to such questions. So we're ready to begin.
All right, thank you, Attorney Osnach. All right, good evening, Mayor Buck and city council. We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing for the 2023 Housing Needs Analysis Update, which we've been working to develop with the help of our project consultants at MIG and Johnson Economics. So I might, just as a warning, I might use that acronym HNA moving forward to refer to Housing Needs Analysis, just for shorthand. So tonight, I'm joined by Brendan Buckley with Johnson Economics, Matt Hasty with MIG, and as well as Sarah Walker, the Chair of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force. Both Sarah and Matt will be helping me with the presentation tonight. After the presentation, of course, we'll have public testimony, and then you'll be tasked with making a recommendation on whether to approve the HNA. So just a quick overview of what we're hoping to touch on in our presentation, starting with an overview of the process and public engagement we utilize for the project. Then I'll hand it over to Sarah for an overview of the work of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, including a summary of their input and how it was addressed in the HNA. We'll then have Matt provide a more detailed overview of the findings of the Housing Needs Analysis and Buildable Lands Inventory. And I'll finish the presentation by going over some next steps for the project. So just a, as a reminder, or just a heads up, there are 33 slides in the deck, including this one and the ones we've already gone through. So feel free to interrupt, but there will be time for questions at the end. So as we've, you know, discussed at previous city council meetings, the city is required to update its HNA by December 31st of this year. This slide summarizes the overall kind of project timeline for both the Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Production Strategies work. The project has included several meetings of the Planning Commission, City Council, and the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, that I will explain a little bit more later in the presentation. You can see kind of where we are in the schedule here, looking at the city council, of course, adoption, ideally, or theoretically, if things go as planned, for the adoption of the HNA tonight, sometime before the end of the year would be what's required by the state at least. After adoption, you know, of course, we'll get going with the Housing Production Strategy phase of the work, quickly moving to make sure we can meet that December 31st, 2024 deadline that we have for that work. So you can see kind of that that will follow soon after here. Sort of at the bottom of the chart on the side, you can see that we've woven community engagement throughout this process as, as much as we could at different sort of segments of the project so far, and intend to, you know, continue doing that in the future, you know, through the Housing Production Strategy Task Force and some other sort of work that I'll describe a bit in a few slides. So before we get into that public engagement piece, though, I wanted to briefly explain what a Housing Needs Analysis is. So an HNA or Housing Needs Analysis is an assessment of housing need and housing capacity in the city of Lake Oswego. So it's really intended to establish kind of a baseline of housing needs, and it's over a 20-year time period or planning horizon. And we, you know, are being forced to kind of consider those needs under state legislation as we move forward with the Housing Production Strategy work. Essentially, a Housing Needs Analysis consists of two primary components, the buildable lands inventory, that includes an inventory of the city's buildable land, of course, and a Housing Needs Projection, that includes a projection of the city's housing needs over that 20-year time period. So the current Housing Needs Analysis, we currently have one that we've adopted in the comprehensive plan, that was adopted back in 2013. Since then, the state has adopted some new rules for Housing Needs Analyses as part of House Bill 2003. So as I'm, I've probably presented to you multiple times at this point, House Bill 2003 was enacted in 2019 by the Oregon State Legislature to meet the housing needs of residents throughout the state, by requiring that cities with over 10,000 residents both analyze the future needs of their community through an HNA and develop strategies that promote the development of such needed housing through a Housing Production Strategy. So they adopted, or the DLCD, Department of State, State Department of Land Conservation and Development, then adopted rules to implement House Bill 2003 in November of 2020. They're kind of contained in OAR 660, 008, 0045 through 70. I don't want to say that too much, but there, there are rules that were adopted. As I mentioned earlier, those rules required us to adopt an HNA by the end of this year. And just kind of to think of it in terms of council goals, this was first prioritized by city council as a part of their 20, of your all 2022 goals and initiatives, which included continuing the multi-year work plan to complete work on key housing initiatives, including HB 2003 compliance. So this is, of course, a council goal in 2023 as well. So this slide shows a very general overview of the process, including both the Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Production Strategies component of the work that's required under HB 2003. We started by looking really at an in-depth projection of the city's housing need, or the, really the demand side for housing in the city, as well as an inventory of that buildable land, looking at more of the supply side of the equation. Then we went out and conducted some public outreach surrounding those two components of our study in spring of this year, earlier this year, to make sure that we were on the right track and could respond to any concerns that were identified at that stage of the process. We then went forward and reconciled the housing capacity analysis and the BLI through what we call the residential land needs analysis, and kind of identified the extent of the city's deficit and meaning our housing need through that exercise. This is all summarized and contained within the Housing Needs Analysis Report, which is, of course, being considered for adoption today. That HNA report is intended to provide a foundation for the city's work to develop a housing production strategy, as I've mentioned a few times, and that, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure out a way to address those needs with the HPS work. So in terms of public engagement, we have, as I said, we've been doing quite a bit this year so far. We've had three meetings of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force so far, and we have the fourth one coming on Friday of this week. We did have an online open house that was available between March 31st and April 24th of this year. We had a online community forum that we did in April for Planning Commission meetings in addition to- in addition to a public hearing and adoption of findings, and three different City Council meetings where we discussed this. So just to quickly introduce the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, you know, we established this Housing Production Strategy Task Force by a resolution of City Council in June of last year. Generally speaking, the goal of the task force is to assist with the city's work in complying with House Bill 2003. The task force was appointed via council resolution in October of last year. The formal responsibilities, more specifically, are to provide guidance to staff and the Planning Commission as the city identifies housing needs and develops strategies to address them, and to recommend outreach strategies, comprehensive plan amendments, and other actions to develop a HPS and implementation plan. So in order to establish the task force, staff solicited for volunteers in the summer and fall of last year. We received about 56 different applications, pretty good response for a task force of this nature. In selecting members, the focus was on finding community representatives with diverse backgrounds, including those who experienced difficulty finding housing within the city of Lake Oswego in particular. Ultimately, 20 members were selected to be appointed to the task force. In terms of those members, the membership is incredibly diverse in several ways. We have members with a wide range of experiences, you know, varying from professionals in the building industry to students, service workers, and retirees. Members also have sort of different relationships to housing, whether it be as producers or consumers of housing. We have representatives from five different city boards and commissions, including, of course, well, I guess, in addition to City Council, we have, of course, Mayor Buck serving on the committee, in addition to representatives from the Planning Commission, Development Review Commission, the DEI Advisory Board, Transportation Advisory Board, and the 50-plus Advisory Board. We also have a representative from the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, one sort of representative and one alternate to help ensure that we're on the right track and kind of not steering too far outside of the parameters for the project that were established by the state. We consider this diversity to be a pretty major asset of the task force, and I think we're getting a pretty well-rounded set of contributions from the members so far. So the task force, as I mentioned, has met three times so far, had a kind of a kickoff meeting back in December, really to put things together, establish the organization of the task force, and just kind of review some background information, because there's a lot to sort of dive into here. We held the second meeting in March to talk about some of our initial findings with the draft Housing Capacity Analysis and BLI. And then in our third meeting in June, we essentially reviewed some of the comments that we got for those draft documents, as well as kind of talking about what we intended to do sort of in response, and to sort of look at that comparison of the, the need and supply and sort of look at what that reconciliation looks like. So as I mentioned, we are going to be meeting again on Friday of this week. That will be our fourth meeting. So I just wanted to, before we go any further, hand things over to Sarah Walker, who will be helping out with the next portion of the presentation. Of course, she is the Chair of the HPS Task Force.
All right, good evening, Mayor Buck and honorable, honorable members of the council. Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Walker, and I was selected to be the Chair of the Housing Production Strategy Task Force. I am an urban planner by, I have a master's in urban planning, and I currently work for a nonprofit affordable housing developer. I'm also a mother of two and a native Oregonian, and I've lived in Lake Oswego now for five years. So I was asked to come tonight to kind of talk about some of the key themes that have come up in our discussions as a group with the task force. So starting out, one of the first themes that has come up for discussion is that the projected increase in population for the city is actually lower than I think a lot of us expected it to be. And so many of us felt that the population actually would likely increase more than the projected forecast, and that there's likely more housing need than what is actually being shown in the projections. And as you can see on the slide, it actually seems like it was supported also by outreach to the greater public in the city. And so while, you know, the, the projections are provided to the city by Metro and PSU, and there is little input from the city or ability to actually change the numbers, there is still an opportunity for the city to plan for what we believe to be the actual need to accommodate current and future residents. Kind of on this note, it was interesting at the Planning Commission meeting, one of the things that came up is there was at least one commissioner that expressed actually doing the bare minimum and not building in order to preserve exclusivity in the city, which I was actually very surprised and a little bit concerned to hear. So the next theme that came up was that the task force actually asked for information on the diversity of Lake Oswego residents to be provided as part of the housing needs assessment. So in response, staff and the consultant team added this information in, and they included comparisons with Clovis County as well as the state. And so you can see these results were summarized on the slide. It shows that, again, the city's population is roughly 80% white, 1% black, 8% Asian, 9% two or more racist, and roughly 5% Hispanic. This makeup reflects that while the city's racial composition has become more diverse in the last 10 years, it is still less diverse than other cities in the state or even a county. The task force also provided input related to the boundaries of the study area. Staff originally was trying to account for annexations in unincorporated areas of the city within their assumptions for the buildable lands inventory. However, these areas were not included in the housing capacity or housing needs assessment. And so ultimately, after discussion with the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, it was decided to actually limit the study area to just the city limits in order to ensure consistency between the buildable lands inventory and the housing capacity analysis. So the unincorporated areas are going to, you know, they're still accounted for within the county's needs assessment, but they aren't, in order to ensure consistency, they are not addressed in the cities. And so, in starting to think about how well we want to accommodate need, the task force also had input regarding the assumptions of how much middle housing we thought might be produced in the city. So initial analysis assumed that the development of roughly 400 units of new middle housing could be developed in the city. However, there were several members of the task force that noted that many Lake Oswego neighborhoods have CCNRs or condition covenants and restrictions that may prohibit middle housing development. And so in response to this, staff actually did quite a bit of analysis with the consultant team to kind of try their best to figure out kind of where middle housing may realistically be accommodated, ruling out some areas like planned developments or planned unit developments. And in kind of, the result of that was lowering the assumed percentage of middle housing development on infill sites from 3% down to 1%. And this is kind of a conservative approach. So it doesn't mean that that housing can't be developed, it just means that in terms of strategies, kind of taking a conservative approach to that, that particular estimate. And again, this was another hot topic for the Planning Commission with some of the members wanting to be realistic versus some just wanting to kind of include the max to lower the, you know, having to do less, I suppose, or kind of find other ways to address it. The next kind of topic that we talked about on the task force was that cottage clusters and accessory dwelling units could actually be well-suited strategies to accommodate aging in place and multi-generational living arrangements. So 50% of respondents were also interested in, according to the survey, in cottage clusters and stated that they'd like to see more in the city. And so this is something that we will likely discuss more with the consultant team and staff in terms of the Housing Production Strategies work. The task force also identified that housing affordability is a significant issue, which was again supported by the larger survey that was issued. As you can see, roughly 78% of respondents to the survey identified housing affordability as one of the greatest housing needs, and 60% of respondents stated that they thought the availability of housing for lower incomes was a major housing need within the city. So the, the HNA, you know, substantiates this, showing that 34% of the total units that are needed in the city are for very low and low or extremely low income households. And so that's something, again, that's going to need to be kind of focused on in terms of what types of housing are appropriate to accommodate those types of households. Another key theme was the opportunities for residents to age in place, and this includes housing that has accessibility features for individuals that may have impaired mobility or near mobile, more located near amenities in order to ensure that they have access to things that they need, services. And so as shown on the slide, 59% of survey respondents also shared this concern, and there's been increasing reporting on how seniors are one of the fastest-growing groups actually experiencing homelessness. So consequently, this again will be an area of focus that I think we want to look at, the task force would like to look at as we move forward into those strategies. And finally, there was also a lot of conversation about the buildable lands inventory, and myself in particular, having concerns about the availability of land that's appropriately zoned to accommodate a variety of housing types. For example, there's a large, I have a concern about the, how much developable land exists within the city that's not constrained, meaning that it has access to infrastructure, it's not in a flood or hazard zone, that the land costs aren't astronomical, or that they are available, or that it's not in a conservation area. So while we have existing opportunities, particularly for the development of single-family homes in the city, there is very little land that is actually zoned that's viable for multifamily housing development currently, at least that's vacant. So this again will be something that is examined in more detail as part of the Housing Production Strategies and to further kind of analyze what existing land resources are out there, and how the city can promote and encourage development of a variety of housing types in the right places that are, you know, along transit, near amenities, and ideally kind of synchronized with existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. I'll now hand it over to Matt for the next component of this presentation. Apologies for the musical chairs here.
And I'm actually going to turn it over to Brendan, and we're going to kind of tag-team this next piece. So Brendan will talk about the, the needs or the demand side of the equation, and I'll talk about the inventory or the supply side. So, and thanks for having us tonight.
Yes, thank you for having us. So we're part of the consulting team. We worked on the sort of technical products behind the Housing Needs Analysis, and we're going to present some of the numbers and methodology to you tonight, and then, of course, we're here to answer questions. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how, on the demand side, housing need based on projections that we get from PSU, which I'll talk about, I'm sorry, from Metro, which I'll talk about in just a minute. But, so I'll talk about the demand side, and then Matt's going to talk about the land inventory side or the supply. So our methodology is to sort of come up with a profile of your current housing stock and demographics, and come up with an estimate of how well your current stock is meeting the needs of your current residents and households. And then we work forward in the 20-year timeframe to project the amount of growth in population and therefore households in the community, and what that, what that means for the types and amount of housing you'll need going forward. So as I alluded to, Metro determines the population, household, and employment forecasts across the metro area for all the included communities, and state statute requires that we do use those forecasts in the Housing Needs Analysis, and that's where the numbers that we're going to show you here in a minute come from. These are the, the basic breakdown of, of what we found. It compares the growth between the year 2000 and our estimates for 2023, and then 2043 is the end of our planning period. So based on those projections from Portland State, the, there's an estimated growth over the next 20 years in the city of Lake Oswego of only a little over 400 people. It's a very low growth rate. It's well less than 1% per year, and less than what the city has achieved in the last 10 years, 20 years, and so on. But that is the, the forecast we have to work with. The number of households is higher, and the reason for that is because while population, overall population growth might be slow, the average household size is forecast to fall in the community as it is in, in many communities across the country, based on general demographic trends. And so as that average household size falls across the whole community, the, you're talking about having more, a greater number of smaller households. And so that's why the need, the 20-year need for households, or 20-year growth of households is 1,800, you know, well more than the, the population forecast, because some of the current population numbers you have are going to be living in smaller households. The number of housing units is higher still because that includes an assumption for some vacancies so that people have housing choice, and there's some movement in the housing market. Next slide. Current housing condition, so in Lake Oswego, you have about 70% owner-occupied units, 30% renters. Owner-occupied units tend to be single-family homes and larger, so three or more bedrooms and rental units. About three-quarters of them have two bedrooms or fewer, so that's, you know, a pretty common trend in comparing homes to apartments. You do have, if you look at the pie chart there, you'll notice that the number of studio and one-bedroom units you have is right around 10%. So there, the number of units you have for, you know, single fam, single-person households, smaller households, renters, is, is fairly modest. On the right, you see the breakdown between owner-occupied households in green and renters in yellow. So a little over 80% of your owner-occupied homes are detached homes, but you do have some mix of, of single-family attached, like townhomes type units, and even condos mixed in there. And then for rental units, the, there's a much greater variety of unit type. Next slide. So getting to that 20-year forecast, the new unit needed over that, the number of new units needed over that 20 years was 1,968 units, we'll say a little under 2,000 units. That would be 11% growth in your overall inventory. And when we get into talking about the types of units those might be, we look at trends, a number of trends, and we talk about this with the task force in detail as well, which is what, what's going to be happening going forward that might affect the types of housing getting built. So what we find is while single-family detached might still be the single largest category, it's going to be a smaller share than it has been in the past, and that you're likely to see more attached types of homes and more of that middle housing and more of the multifamily going forward. And this slide shows a breakdown of that estimated number of, of units, nearly 2,000 new units, broken down by income categories. And the categories shown here are categories that are commonly used for affordable housing programs by the state and HUD. So that's, that's where these terms low income, very low income, extremely low income come from, and how they're matched to the, the percentages of median income. But, so what you find is that for the household low income and below, earning 80% of the median income or less, they are accounting for about 35% of the forecasted need over the next 20 years. And so those are the types of housing that often require a little bit of extra help, incentives, or subsidy programs to help bring about. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it over to Matt to talk about inventory.
All right, thanks, Brendan. So I'll just talk about sort of the steps we go through, say a little bit about the numbers, a little bit more detail about these steps. So first step is to classify the land, so we sort of start out looking at all land, but then we identify and sort of focus in on land that's zoned to accommodate housing, so residential or mixed-use areas. And then we take out, for inventory purposes, land that's constrained by natural resources and natural hazards. I think we'll have a slide that says a little bit more about that, but those are things like streams, wetlands, steep slopes, and that nature. And then we classify land by development status. That's essentially properties that are vacant. They're essentially completely vacant, or they might have some small structure on them, but they don't have a home on them. Partially vacant, those are properties that have a home, but they have the ability, based on their zoning and their size, to potentially accommodate additional housing. So those are partially vacant. And then developed are basically everything else. There's also some properties we There's also some properties we take out that are publicly owned and plan for use for public facilities or services, lands owned like churches or fraternal organizations or things like that. So those come out of the inventory as well. And then we also deduct land from those vacant and partially vacant lands that is needed for things like roads and other infrastructure. So that gets us down to this net buildable area and then we convert that into capacity for housing units based on the estimated number of housing units per acre that can be developed in different zones primarily based on your zoning and sort of what's allowed and can be accommodated there. So I'll say just a little bit more about each of these steps or at least show you some maps. So this is a map that's just sort of showing you, you know, all of the land in the study area within the city limits, the yellow. This is showing you those constrained areas. So it's showing you in the kind of pink, I guess, slopes that are greater than 25%. Those are sort of automatically taken out. If there's a piece of property that has a portion of the property that's sloped, it's the portion of the property that's sloped that's taken out. And that's the same for all of these constraints. We don't just deduct the entire parcel unless the entire parcel's covered by a constraint. I'll also say that this is for inventory purposes. In a lot of cases, you might have development code restrictions that do limit the amount of development, but we're not saying somebody absolutely can't develop one of these properties. But for inventory purposes, we're deducting it from the inventory as constrained by these different factors. So this map shows you those different factors. Happy to answer more questions about that later if you have them. And then this is showing sort of development status. So essentially, the purple is developed and the yellow are properties that are vacant or partially vacant. So partly what you're seeing here is not a ton of developable land, land that shows up in the inventory. And you'll kind of see that in the numbers when we show what those total numbers are and then kind of reconcile the demand and the supply side. So that's what we've got here, is that comparison of land supply and demand or projected need for housing. So the, kind of the far-right numbers are really, both in terms of units and acres, are kind of the key numbers here. So we've basically estimated the capacity in terms of housing units, the projected need for new units by different essentially densities. And we've identified what types of housing correspond to those different densities. Those are essentially not just densities, but zoning and zone and plan categories. So we've kind of split them into low-density, medium, and high. Talked about what kind of housing that equals. And what this is showing is even though we're assuming a fairly low rate of population growth, we are projecting the need for about 2,000 new units and you have a pretty limited supply of land that showed up in the inventory. And that then results in a deficit of land and, you know, units to accommodate that future need that we've projected. So, and then kind of across the board, in all three categories, we're showing that deficit. And it's actually pretty evenly distributed across the three. The other thing I'll say, and Sarah mentioned this, is, you know, this is based on kind of all these projections, our, our analysis of the inventory. And the inventory sort of represents what potentially could be developed, but it doesn't necessarily what represent what will be developed. You know, we can't guarantee that's all going to be developed. Some of those properties, especially some of the infill parcels, may be very expensive or costly to develop. So will they be developed and accommodate the types of housing, you know, we've shown? You know, we don't know that for sure. So I will say that there's, you know, a reasonable chance, well, there's almost a certainty that at least in the short terms is probably underestimating the deficit. And in the long term, it's potentially underestimating the deficit as well. Certainly without some kind of intervention or some strategies that the city undertakes in partnership with property owners, builders, developers, et cetera, to kind of achieve and meet those future housing needs. And that's really the subject of that next phase of the work, the housing production strategies.
Can I interject real quick? So to clarify, so when looking at the buildable land inventory, we're really looking at vacant land and some conversion rate of existing single-family homes to middle housing?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Vacant land and partially vacant land. So partially vacant land are properties that have the capacity for additional homes on them, they have a home. That's not necessarily the same as conversion to middle housing. But then on top of that, we do assume a certain amount of sort of in, on those, those land, those properties with existing homes, that some of that may convert. That's that one and a half percent that we talked about earlier, as opposed to 3%.
Gotcha.
Which is the maximum we can assume.
Is there a, thank you for that, is there a, a factor on the conversion of, of currently occupied commercial land?
No, that's not something that we assumed. If it's zoned, you know, purely for commercial purposes, we don't include that in the inventory. Even though in some cases residential uses might be allowed there, it's not sort of the planned use if it's a commercial zone. If it's a mixed-use zone, then we do assume a certain amount of residential development in those mixed-use zones because the mixed-use zones are intended for a combination of housing and, and commercial or non-residential. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I just didn't see those properties because, I mean, all of Lake Grove is planned mixed-use downtown. I mean, it's intended for housing above retail specifically.
Yeah, and so that might just be because, well, I'd have to kind of go back and look at the map, but I'm pretty sure we assumed a certain percentage of residential in the mixed-use areas, but not in the purely commercial areas.
Yeah, and I think it's additionally confusing because a lot of our mixed-use zones are named commercial zones. So they, they sound like commercial zones when really they're mixed-use zones. But yeah, we, you know, in terms of what's available vacant or partially vacant land, that should be reflected in, in all those areas where that is allowed.
And, and so that may represent to some degree some, I would call it like bonus capacity for some additional housing. And that could also be something we look at in the housing production strategies, sort of think of it as a, I don't know, a, a strategy to, to encourage or really promote more housing in those areas. So I think that's, I think that's the case. Also, whenever I say we, I mean our team and our expert on the BLI stuff isn't with us tonight other than listening in maybe on the phone. So I think I got that mostly right.
Okay, thank you.
So just a few sort of takeaways from the analysis I'll mention. You know, the HNA, the projections that Brendan described, they really do identify the need for a mix of housings to address households with sort of a full range of incomes, different household size, other needs, and to simply allow a sort of choice within the market. The second statistic's been mentioned a couple of times already, but 34% of those total projected needed new units are for low or very low or extremely low-income households. The need for attached units will increase compared to the current supply. That was the thing that Brendan mentioned, you're going to see a greater need for those types of housing compared to the current mix. Talked about the fact that the BLI overestimates the developable land particularly in the short term. In some cases, some of that land frankly won't develop until the land prices get higher and the market says, okay, now this makes sense financially to develop those lands. And I mentioned deficit of land in all three categories, sort of zoning, broad zoning categories. And so all of these things are sort of going to point us to identifying specific strategies in the housing production strategy process to address those needs. And that's, that's the next step. And our meeting this Friday was, is, we, we had a little bit of information in our last task force meeting about just what is a housing production strategy. But our, our upcoming meeting is to start to talk about those strategies. What are some of these strategies? Which ones have we as a project team or staff started to kind of focus in on in terms of being particularly appropriate or potentially valuable in Lake Oswego? So that's to come. And I think that's it. You going to do next steps?
Yeah, I'll just close out the presentation by speaking briefly about next steps. But before I do that, I just wanted to touch base on what we heard at the Planning Commission. So the commission held a public hearing on the HNA on August 28th of this year and they recommended approval subject to one modification. As Sarah mentioned earlier in the presentation and we've discussed, you know, Matt mentioned it as well, the projected growth identified in the HNA seemed unusually low to many folks. So the projection, as we've talked about, is based on the 2021 coordinated population forecast from Metro. But essentially, the Planning Commission directed staff to add a footnote to the HNA, essentially pointing out that this sure seems like a low projection. And we intend to circle back with Metro when we come back to revise our housing needs analysis in six years as required under state law. So that's just kind of a quick summary of, of what sort of the commission found and what they added to the report as, as a result of that finding. The next steps for the project, of course, the, the current step is potentially adopting the HNA today at our, at our hearing. The findings are at least tentatively scheduled for October 17th. And that, you know, they would take effect 30 days later, so November 17th of that was the date that they were adopted. They, so just in terms of the next steps, as Matt pointed out, and we've been mentioning, we do have Housing Production Strategy Task Force meeting number four later this week. We'll, we'll start talking about, you know, next steps essentially to bridge the gap between the HNA and the HPS work more or less. And then we will be coming to you with similar information in early November as well as the Planning Commission. So that's kind of the next steps, at least in the near term. There's a lot more coming. But with that, I will conclude the presentation. And there were only 31 slides. I was wrong.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you to the project team and thank you, Ms. Walker, for being here as well and for the good work of the Production Strategy Task Force. Okay, we're going to start with questions and first up, Councilor Fink.
Thank you very much. Sarah, in the back, what you said today was music to my ears and I just want the music to be louder and the rhythm faster. Hopefully in the 2024 goal setting, we can put some teeth into our strategy and make more affordable housing as well as more middle housing. Mr. Olson, I have some questions for you. You have answered some of them over email, but there are some citizens who asked me those questions and I want to publicly ask them so they can also listen and hear. There were a couple of numbers. One was 851 number, that's the capacity, and 642 deficit. On page three of your report, it said, we have the capacity of 851 and, but the deficit of 642. Are we reading that, those numbers correctly?
So you're referring to page three of the report? And we, you know, included information there on the capacity, I think. I'm not sure where you're seeing the 800 number in particular. But yeah, we, it's essentially, you know, my interpretation or my take is that it's the same as what we see on the screen basically of, of what is included in the document here. So I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to in terms of the 800 unit capacity.
What is it? Okay.
The capacity, you know, essentially that we found was that 1327 number, more or less, that you see on the supply, you know, sort of version of the, the table here, that, that column.
Yeah, on page three, under Housing Need Analysis Report Summary, paragraph second, 850, it says, the estimated unit capacity for this area is approximately 851 dwelling units. But what I'm hearing you say is that officially we're saying 642 units.
Right, I mean, we're, you, unit capacity is different than a deficit. And so when we talk about, you know, specifically unit capacity for the, you know, sort of the way that we're breaking it down, I think I'm just, you know, in the report, we're trying to break down, that's part of the capacity equation. And then, you know, there's more that we consider in addition to that. So we add that capacity for middle housing as well as, you know, units that have been approved by the city but not yet constructed. And that's where we get to that 1327 number as explained in that paragraph.
Next question is, on page 18, there is a figure that, figure 2.3, that shows the last 20-some years, the number of units that we have added in Lake Oswego. And I think the lowest was in 2008 and 2009, 40 to 45. But the average is about 115, 117 per year. And if I look at the 1968, we're looking at 99 or 100 per year. So if we look at the average over the last 20 years, if we assume the same average, we should be able to hit the mark.
Right, I mean, the, the mark in terms of, you know, that, that necessarily, that need, I suppose, that, that could be the case. Yeah, I think that's kind of getting to the point that many are making that, you know, that seems like it's a fairly low projection that we're responding to there.
Next question, a unit could be a studio apartment for rent, correct?
That's right.
If I look at all the numbers and the presentation tonight, it sounds like building it is no problem, but we're running out of land.
I'm not sure I would say that building it is no problem. I think especially if we want to target certain types of development, there's a lot that we need to do.
Last 20 years data and projecting that to next 20 years.
I guess I would just add that building a certain amount of housing over the last 20 years occurred, was it built in the sort of ratios or the types that were needed by folks who live here in terms of their income, household size, et cetera? Not necessarily. I think that's why when we look at the comparison of even existing need, you see a mismatch in some of the income categories and types of housing. And then when you sort of think about moving forward, do you have, I think you're right in terms of the issue, part of the issue is just the supply of land and not just the supply of land overall, but for specific types of housing. So, and building housing that's going to meet the affordability needs of people on a full, you know, full range of incomes, I think that will be a challenge. Just because of a variety of factors that affect the cost of construction, what the market will bear in Lake Oswego, et cetera. So I think that's where your challenges are likely to be.
Yeah, and I, just to reiterate, you know, we, we do think that need is much lower than it really is. So even if we think that, you know, we can actually grow in a way, you know, again, there, there is a limit, right? There is a capacity development in the city. So even though we see a certain amount of development, that might sort of reach a, a point where it doesn't have any room to, to grow any longer. So I think that's what we need to account for here and we are, as we've noted here, even with that very low growth projection, still, you know, in a deficit. So yeah, I think, you know, the, the point is, is taken that we have historically developed more housing, but we also, you know, we're not really accounting for the growth that we should be expecting here.
I agree that that projection is low. Next question, was the urban service boundary, the properties included in this calculation?
No.
Are we allowed to do that?
We're allowed to do it, but it would add a lot of complication to the study and we were given direction to, or, you know, we're taking public input and input from the Housing Production Strategy Task Force where we heard that, you know, we should make those consistent more or less. So I, I don't want to get into, you know, the details. I'll probably hand it over to Brendan to talk a little bit more about some of the implications of looking at that sort of unannexed areas within the study. But ultimately, the projections that were given from Metro don't show any growth in those areas. So it's, it's really hard to sort of make the numerator and the denominator on the demand and supply side kind of match up because of that within those areas. It's, it's going to present some potential problems in terms of data inconsistency. But I, there's a lot more to say on that front if, if you want to talk about.
You answered my question. Thank you. Next question, I noticed that. Next question, I noticed that Planning Commission changed the 3% to 1 and 1/2% for redevelopment as a middle housing. That...
That was what was proposed, so they approved what was proposed.
Okay. That variation, so I guess the question is, the 642 number, what does that obligate us to do?
It obligates us to look at strategies that, you know, sort of would use that as a baseline for, you know, we need to think about the scale and effectiveness of the different strategies that we could be including in our housing production strategy. So it really just kind of gives us a North Star, if you will, in terms of this is what we need to accomplish with that strategy. That being said, there's no expectation from the State Department of Land Conservation and Development that, you know, we're going to be held to this 642 number in 2043, that they're going to come back and censure us in some way. You know, I think they're looking at enforcement of, you know, cities that aren't adopting their HNAs on schedule or their HPS, as well as enforcement of cities that aren't meeting the commitments in their HPS. So they're not looking for cities to be responsible for what's essentially something in the private market, that, you know, cities can do their best to try to encourage the development of housing, but it's not really in the direct control of a city, especially of the scale of this one.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Afkan. And Council Winland.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thanks to Sarah for volunteering. It's, it always amazes me, and Lake Oswego got to have the talent pool that steps forward. I thought, actually, you were part of the staff, so thank you. And thanks for leading the committee. I just look at this in the macro sense that we have run out of land. I mean, essentially, we don't have a whole lot left. I think you stated it well, that we have limited control, really, on the private market, on whether they're going to invest or not invest in housing. And so I think we have to be realistic as a city. While we need to provide more housing, I, it's hard to build houses when you don't have land. I mean, it's just one of those square hole, round peg type problems. One thing that I, I think we should be aware of is that the demographic studies that Portland State puts together, I was on the school board for a long time, and one of the, they are pretty accurate. And unfortunately, I think we're in a situation where we have a lot of people that are using Lake Oswego houses as second homes now, and so that's not really helping our population, per se, because people are counted in a different, and as our tax, taxes in Oregon continue to go up, there's more and more people that, I mean, I could probably name 50 people that I know that are, still have a footprint in Lake Oswego, but their tax base is in another state. And so I think we're going to continue to see more and more of that with Lake Oswego because of our income structures here. A couple of things, I always think that you shoot low and then you overachieve. So I, I think 19, almost 2,000 units in this city, I really, I don't envy the next steps for you to figure out anything that we could do to do that unless we put up a 30-story apartment building in foothills, but I just don't see where that's going to go. But I, I guess I would like, it's fine to have all these plans and everything, but I guess I would like to try to get down to some realistic ideas, concepts of what maybe other cities have done or other places have done so that we, so people understand this. Because right now, if you say 2,000 additional units in Lake Oswego, they're just going to say, wow, you're, you're really smoking the good stuff, because that may be difficult to do unless you start changing all single-family homes to multiple family housing. 2,000 units is a lot of units. So I, I think all this is, it's good, it's helping Oregon on providing some sort of planning and strategies, but I guess I would need to see more specifics on what really strategies that would work and examples of how we might accomplish it for our city instead of being more philosophical, I guess. And I appreciate the work, I truly do. And I know that this is a state mandate, and we're having to do this, and you guys are putting a master plan together, but I guess it's, we can put the roadmap down, but I think the council is really going to have to have some definitive ways of figuring out tools or things that are reality. And so maybe that would be very helpful, at least for me.
Yeah, you know, I think, sorry to interrupt, by the way, but we had a lot of folks with a similar perspective that, you know, this is, this is a statistical kind of technical exercise, and a lot of folks want to get down to, okay, what do we do about it? And there will be lots of opportunity to have those conversations moving forward, but I would say that a lot of other folks had that same sort of reaction to this and just say, okay, come on, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? So we're excited to jump to that step, but this is just kind of that first sort of initial statistical technical exercise that we need to do to get us there.
No, I, I understand, and we're following the rules, and I want to follow the rules. Don't get me wrong, I want to make sure that we, we do things, but I think the practicality comes down, from my viewpoint, in, in figuring out major strategy points that either have worked in other places or things that, some examples that are concrete. Doesn't have to be all the master plan to put it all the way through for the next 40 years, but just some major concepts.
Yeah, that's exactly what we'll be doing in the next year.
Okay.
As part of this, sort of the second part of this process, is to do just that.
Yeah, there'll be a lot to dig into, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Council Winland. Questions for staff? Councilor Mbo, questions?
Yeah, questions, I, I, you know, it's very difficult to understand the growth in 2043, but if you see the trend from 1980 to now, that it hasn't grown a lot. Like, I can give the figure, in 1980, the population was 25,760, and in 1990, 32,000. So we have a group of 7,000 people. In 2000, it was only 35,000, so 3,000, and 2010, 1,000. So it seems like, as we go, it's falling down, the population. And I think that's that trend that PSU took, but it's a statistic, it may not be true. And if it's not, we are in trouble. That's like, you know, that's where I want to, you know, if it's the good trend, that the population has been dipping, you know, as we move, it's good, but if it's not, we are in deep trouble. And by the way, your math, you know, the total of 1327 is 1326. This is year one, yeah.
There's probably some decimals that aren't shown around.
That's the teacher talking, yeah. Now, even if the 65, yeah.
F teacher.
Yeah, that, no, the general teacher, you know, the general, so former student, when you do math, it has to be exact. But, yeah, so for me, the 642, it's, we cannot just say we cannot build. It does not make sense. Like, there are possibilities to have these 642 units. It's not like, oh, there is no more land. Before, there was no land in Lake Oswego, and we built. Lake Oswego was a village of some thousand people, and now we have 41,000. Forty years ago, or 50 years, if you told the people there that you would have a city hall like this, they won't believe you, you know, that. So I think, you know, as we move, there are like some environmental questions. When we know that there are some people who live in, like, 10,000 square feet houses for two people, like, you look at those, and like, we have to face the thing, we cannot have the cake. You said it, the, you, the, you know, the Anglo-Saxon says, Americans, you cannot have your cake and eat it too. You want, you are fighting environmental disasters, you drive Teslas, you know, but you go to Starbucks, and you live in a 10,000 square feet home. So it does not add up, you know, like the belief system. I am electric everywhere, but I, um, my footprint tripled almost like, so the Tesla you bought is just maybe to feel, it's a feel-good problem. So the, we can build housing that are sustainable and that are, you know, the CCNR, they are here, but people put them there, we can move them, you know, like, as a city, as government can say, no, 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 yeah, there's, no, we can.
It's land use.
Yeah, it's land use, yeah, but not us, but it will, no, nothing is, yeah, we can. Now, it can, it can be done. That's not like, there is nothing that humans, we put here and say, no, we can't. There were land use here in Lake Oswego that no longer can be enacted, because they were land used that excluded me to buy my home. Now I have a home here. Some years ago, I could not, I wouldn't even be allowed to talk here, to speak here. So what I'm saying is, we have to move forward. We are a city that moves forward. Like you say, we are a very progressive city, a very, so we have the intelligence also to take care of those things. There are many people who are aging, and they are moving away because they cannot live here anymore. For a city they work for, they live for, they get excluded, and we are continuing to say, it's normal, it's them, it's not the market, it's us, and we can change it. And like, when we talk environment, we talk density, we say that no more parking, there are a lot of policies, we are talking here, that will solve the problem of the housing. So it's building, we cannot just always say, oh, single-family housing, it's just a ranch or stuff. No, we have to build, you know, to be sustainable, develop density so that people can live here. And you know, you know what, we like it or not, it's going to happen. It's better that we do it when we can than when we are forced to do it. Thank you. And also, thank you for the work, it's clear, we have a roadmap, you know, we have, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Well, an A on the comments from the right side of the dice, but an F for asking questions. Good. Thank you both. All right, we are going to open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here, do we have anyone here to testify? Is anyone here to testify? Okay, no one testify? All right.
Can I make a motion?
We're closing the public hearing.
Do I make a motion? To move the Tentally Approved Ordinance 2934 and direct staff to return on October 17th, 2023, with the final version of the ordinance, including the findings and conclusions of LU 23-0023.
I second that.
Okay, discussion.
Does that include the Planning Commission's?
I think Council Winland said December 17th, but I think it would be October.
October 17th. October 17th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I believe, Councilor Corrigan.
My mug is covering your, oh, oh, I see, yes, Councilor Corrigan.
Hi, I know I'm invisible, but I, I just want to clarify a few things. By doing this, we will be raising the bar on ourselves higher than the law requires. Is that right?
I'm not sure I would put it that way. I mean, if you're referring to the growth rate of middle housing and the assumptions that we made about that, we aren't necessarily assuming that full maximum 3% growth.
Higher than the law requires.
But, sorry, there's some echoes going on here. But anyway, so, you know, I think we're required by the state to put forth an analysis that makes sense, that is supported by data. So even though we could, you know, theoretically go up to 3%, we don't really have too much that substantiates that, so we're looking at the sort of data that we have and going to make the best assumption based on that. Sorry, I'm hearing myself as if like 30 seconds ago as well.
She's on the other side of the world, and it's coming around and around.
I mean, I'm not sure, it seems like it might have been, yeah, I think it's gone now, but I can repeat that if it wasn't clear, by the way, but for the most part, you know, we aren't assuming the maximum amount of middle housing development will happen, and we're doing that because we know that there's a ton of barriers to the development of middle housing. So in that way, you know, we're not, we were not sort of assuming that full amount of development, but we're being as clear-eyed as possible.
Okay, thank you. Count, did that answer your question?
No, I have another, another question.
Okay, please, please.
And that, it has to do with the not including the non-annexed properties that are inside our urban service boundary, and that, that confuses me a little bit, because it seems like every week, we annex a property in for development. Like, I think there was on our, our agenda tonight at Acre, that I'm guessing will come in and probably be developed. So the statement that we're not going to do that is not matching up with the reality of what we see. The other thing that, the other thing that I want to acknowledge about that is that is not in alignment with our comp plan that says we will be bringing those, those properties in. So there's a little bit of a reality problem there for me that I don't really understand. And the next question that I had was the question that Mayor Buck asked earlier about not including the redevelopment of commercial properties into housing, because we're seeing that happen right now on Boone's Ferry Road, and it's a wonderful thing, and it fulfills our Lake Grove 2040 plan, and I wish that there were some way to factor that in, because I think that's the reality of what's happening. I do agree that we, we do need, we will benefit from offering different types of housing, and we need to do that, and we do, we absolutely need to move forward. I'm just not sure that we actually have it dialed, dialed in with the reality that we're, that we're witnessing. So, thank you.
I can just respond to at least a few, a few things that you mentioned there, but when it comes to the unannexed areas, you know, we, we know that we do see some annexations, of course, in the city, of course, so that's why we had initially thought, hey, we should include this in our development sort of scenario here, and we should include that in our analysis. Unfortunately, the problem is, is that we don't have any way to really soundly project the amount of growth that could happen in those areas. So while we might be able to say, maybe we assume that there's a certain capacity in those areas, there's no way to sort of come on the other side of that equation and say, you know, we can project a certain amount of growth here based on the metro projections, because they more or less don't show any growth in those areas. So really, it comes down to the way that this analysis is kind of pieced together and its relationship with that original kind of projection from Metro, and the fact that those were left out of that analysis. And so we are somewhat bound to those numbers, and including that would present numerous inconsistencies in the data, which is why we opted not to include them. Of course, that's, you know, of course, we know that annexations exist within the city, but we, of course, also know, based on the, you know, amount of research that was done on annexations about five years ago, that it would take something like 500 years for the neighborhood of Lake Forest to actually fully annex into the city based on our current sort of voluntary annexation policy. So it is an extremely marginal amount of development based on our current sort of approach. So while, you know, the comp plan, of course, would theoretically look at those, you know, areas, and, you know, we are planning for, you know, development for the places that do annex, there's, you know, no approach that shows that that's going to happen on any near timeline. So that's, you know, I guess that's part of the sort of calculus here, but, you know, I guess it's all kind of to say that we have a huge opportunity to look at those areas in the housing production strategies, because, you know, because we aren't necessarily bound by that metro forecast as much with those housing production strategies, and if we do identify that we want to try to approach, you know, meeting our housing need in those areas, then we have a lot of opportunity to, to look at those areas and to know that, you know, we're sort of, as a city, doing something to produce housing there as opposed to just assuming that it would happen. And I think that's kind of where, where we didn't necessarily feel comfortable going through and just saying that we assume that, or we know how much growth would occur in those areas, because we would have to kind of get into some gray area there.
Yeah.
And I just talked for a long time, but there, I don't know if Matt or Brendan, you wanted to add anything on that?
I mean, I would echo what Eric said. I would also say, this is a similar approach to one we used in, for instance, Happy Valley, same thing, you know, they had large annexed areas, he did not have plans that identified exactly how much growth was going to occur there, because we're starting out with projections that don't, that don't include those areas, then to include those areas in the supply side makes the... Then to include those areas in the supply side makes the cake, the the equation essentially kind of out of whack and without a reliable way, like Eric said, to estimate how much development might occur out there. So, you know, it it frankly, even though this seems confusing, it seems even more confusing in my experience to people when you do include those areas, but you don't have a reliable way to estimate how much growth can be accommodated out there. Um, and when the the demand side isn't assuming those areas. So, um, yeah, it it's not a perfect situation, I would agree. But I think this is the the path that makes more sense in terms of doing the analysis. And it really is a technical analysis. And I would agree with Eric that it kind of creates an opportunity for you to think about, well, hey, if those are areas where you're going to need to, in the future, accommodate some growth. How and but it hasn't been happening, those areas haven't been annexed, then what are some strategies to help encourage that to happen or or help make that happen? So I I think in both cases with the assumption related to the urban service boundary areas and the lower assumption around middle housing and sort of gives you the room to, um, and the impetus to make some, to come up with some strategies to encourage those things to happen. So that's how I would think about it. It kind of creates some opportunities in that next phase of the project to address those things in a more direct way.
As opposed to kind of just assuming that we think it will happen and then looking in, you know, we we might not be making, meeting those assumptions over time. So I think this this gives us a lot more flexibility.
Right. And those areas in general just don't eat up our the housing capacity that we need to provide. They add a whole group of new residents to the community and then a whole group of new demographics for those needs have to be met. So this isn't just some group that suddenly, oh, if we just annex this area, wow, look at, we've built all the houses that we need through annexation because we're not, they're not empty homes. You know, they have people in them.
Isn't the county having to come up with their strategies too? So they're accounted for technically.
They are accounted for in the growth that's assumed within the unincorporated portions of the county, yeah.
So we can't annex them by dictate or rulership.
Well, yeah, you could just see how complicated it would get if we started making our own projections there, I suppose.
Well, and given that we're moving ahead with the house, the next, you know, stage of work here is the housing production strategy. Looking at a five hundred year annexation timeline and a twenty year housing production strategy, it's going to be hard to sync those two things up, you know.
Their septic tanks will fail by then and we'll be annexed.
Yes.
So don't worry, it'll happen naturally.
Good point, yeah.
Councillor Aflo.
I think councillor Corrigan and I had similar questions, but I want to go maybe to a higher level and see if my assumptions are correct. Based on Portland State University projections, we need to have one thousand nine hundred and sixty eight units within the next twenty years. Yes?
Metro.
Metro, based on the metro projected number of new units and the projected change in house size.
Whether we include the annexation or we don't, or we include the uh urban service boundaries or we don't, the numbers for the deficit goes up and down, right? But we still need nineteen hundred sixty eight units.
Yeah, that number wouldn't really change much.
That number would not change.
Because very little increase in population was assumed in those unincorporated areas. So that number, very small change.
That's the number we need to have a strategy to make it happen. And I think we all know the answers to that. It's middle housing, it's multifamily housing, it's affordable housing. We just have to figure out how to make that happen to bring one thousand nine hundred sixty eight units to Lake Oswego. So I think we're sort of picking at the numbers as opposed to here's the big picture, how do we get there?
And that's coming next.
And yeah.
Yeah. This is the need analysis and then we're.
Tonight is about, here's the analysis, what it says, and then the team is going to have to look at it and say, what you approved, here's the strategy.
That's right.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Mr.
We're on the same page. Yeah, I think that, you know, Mr. Olson used a good analogy, well, you talked about the musical chairs earlier with the team, you know, shifting around. And it's a great term, you know, to use for a conversation about housing because that is what we have now, a game of musical chairs, where we don't have enough chairs for everyone around the table. And folks are getting pushed out, right? And so that's the risk of underestimating, you know, and that's why we really need to keep an eye on the population numbers. Because sure, it may seem like, well, because no matter how many housing units we have, people will fill them and we'll say, oh, we have the housing people fill.
Right, if you built five thousand houses, we would have five thousand new people.
They will move into them, that's right. If you don't build enough, though, it's the people that we don't see, the ones who didn't get the chair, you know, and they get kicked out, right? And it continues to increase the cost of housing. So there is a risk, even though it may not be visible, there's a risk that we see in the overpricing of the community when we when we underhouse it. So that number is important. And we are definitely not as a community playing a numbers game here with this housing needs analysis. Um, and and trying to skirt, you know, responsibility to ensure that we're providing the housing that is, uh, units that are responsive to the community needs, both current and in the future. At the same time, you know, the housing needs analysis, these units identified, it's not a right, it's not, this isn't bound by any kind of regulatory framework. It's important that we look at these numbers as targets, continue to analyze them over the years, but know that these are based on estimates. And it's a a document that needs to be updated and looked at um over over the over the years as we go forward.
And you'll be required to update it every six years moving forward. And those metro forecasts will get updated every either four or five years as well. So all of that is going to continue to get updated.
We'll we'll have three more times to come back and look at this before the planning horizon has uh come to fruition there.
Yeah, and it is critical for that reason. Because like councillor said, we build the housing, people will fill the housing, you know. Happy Valley grew by a large amount over this last decade because they built a lot of housing and by golly, people moved into it, you know. And we have the opportunity now to really build that toolbox for folks in the development community to reach into, to use, to build the units, the kind of units at the right affordability that people are looking for, the demographic data is critical, you know, showing what people are looking for that are going to be our future residents. You know, what type of housing they want to live in. And it may not be the same type of housing that we built in the eighties, you know, in the nineties when the town was going through high levels of growth, you know. Um, so it's interesting seeing those population trends come down. Um, so anyway, I really want to, and again, give great appreciation to you all for the work on the needs analysis and to Ms. Walker in the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, who's just starting their great work. We didn't call them the Housing Needs Analysis Task Force, they're the Production Strategy Task Force. So now is the time when we get to do all the fun work of seeing how we're going to meet the needs of our community going forward. Okay. All right, you all want to take a vote on this thing here?
Yes.
You ready? Okay, all those in, uh, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I think that passed unanimously, seven zero. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you. And of course, thank you, Sarah and Matt and Brendan.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Hey, we have one.
Sorry, you were at the end of the meeting.
Item left, it's the study session. Can we take a quick five minute bathroom break? And then we're going to talk about wastewater, very appropriate.
So wastewater. Okay, let's go. We're waiting for.
Okay, and we are back in order. Last item on the, well, coming to some of the last items on the agenda is the study session on the wastewater treatment facility project with Epcor Foothills Water Project, Inc. Turn these over to Mr. Hooper for the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm going to keep this concise. This is the 17th time that I personally have come to the council on this topic. So, you know a lot of this, but let's go over some important things. And one of the things that we're going to go over in this presentation is sustainability items and including some recommendations of Sustainability Advisory Board. One thing that I've heard very clearly from your council is that sustainability must be a priority for us when we do design, and we have. It has been thought of constantly within our design. We are at 90% design now, and I'm proud to present a lot of different things that we've done that I am, I think that you'll be very pleased with, and we'll go over those in just a moment. Also, I want to preview some issues that will be coming your way in future council meetings. We have four months before I'm going to ask you, about four months, where I'm going to ask you to make a go-no-go decision on this project and ask for you to make a 30-year decision on making a contract with Epcor to build, or finish the design, go from 90 to 100%, construct it, and then operate and maintain it for the course of 30 years. So what we're, as you know, this is a council goal. So the council goal is determining the best option for replacing the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, currently, the city of Portland owns the Tryon Creek wastewater treatment plant. It was made in 1964, and it needs to be replaced. So we're finding out that it's, we think it's more cost-effective to replace the brand-new building. The early estimates are $800 to a million, to a billion dollars to upgrade the existing plant, whereas it is somewhere around $615 million total to build a new plant over a 30-year period. That includes operating and financing. The actual design bill costs itself is $185 million. I will be coming to you in November or December with some new cost estimates. I do believe that costs will continue to go down. We are working really hard with Epcor to negotiate with them, and we are, there's a lot of collaboration going on, and so I, you will see the price tag go down. But we'll, I won't get into the details of that quite yet. What I also want to say is I have Kirsty Craig. She is the Senior Project Manager for Epcor. She is also online. I'll send it to her at the very end for a couple of quick statements, and then also if you have any questions. So with all that, I'm going to go through this fairly quick, but I wanted to give you that preamble. So this is a look at the existing plant and the new plant. As you can tell, the new plant is fully enclosed, will have odor control, noise control. It looks like a commercial building, whereas the one on the left is very industrial and very wide open, so it's very innovative design. The proposed site is right next to the existing plant. This is down at Foothills and near the river, and then the three properties there we are looking to acquire, and your council has passed a resolution of necessity in previous council meetings on those three properties. We have made a lot of key decisions. As I've said before, we've been working on this project since December 2018, when the council authorized us to do this private partnership and to go through it. And we ended up selecting Epcor in 2021. And then we also, skipping ahead, there was a lot of different approvals, including that resolution of necessity I just mentioned. And then recently, you all have extended the preliminary services to allow us to go from 60 to 90%. And we have finished 90% design. We are currently now working through a few technical issues, but we're working well together, and we'll get through those. I also wanted to say that it still looks like what we projected is what we're thinking it's going to be, is 3.9% increases per year and for the foreseeable future. As a schedule, once again, I think we're looking at January, February for that go-no-go decision. There's actually the Development Review Commission meetings. We anticipate having that in the winter. And we have submitted the land use application, and we've also actually, we're getting close to trying to select a date for that. And then we're working through permitting, and we're working through a lot of different things, and that includes DEQ, and there's, there is a lot of activity going on in this project right now. But as you can tell, one of the main things is that there are a few council site sessions that I'll need to come to the council in the next few months. And I'll go over those in just a moment. But one thing I do need some feedback from you all tonight is whether or not you would like me to include this project, this reclaim water-ready project in the scope of our budget. The Sustainability Advisory Board made a recommendation that we, that the council consider adding $1.1 million of budget to allow us to upgrade the facility so that it is, has solar, or, sorry, that has UV ultraviolet capabilities so that it can do the reclaimed water if we wanted to do it in the future. So basically, we're going to build it. There is some benefits to building it now, too, but we also will stub out a line to the edge of the site. So essentially, it's going to be ready to go. We just need to flip a switch and put the pipe. The reason that I think this is a smart way to go is, one, it doesn't preclude the future; two, it is costly to do it on an annual basis, so it's about $1 million over 30 years. We don't have to pay for that quite yet. So that's one of the things that's avoided within this, in this scope. The original, if you were to do the full mill deal to run the irrigation and operate it to Foothills, we're looking at $3.3 million. That's the price tag, to do the whole thing and just have it up and going. This $1.1 million is just that we upgrade the facility itself so that the plant itself can do reclaimed water, but we're actually not going to run the irrigation line to Foothills and hook it all up and operate it quite yet. The payback on it is a very large number. It's like 190 years on a 30-year lifecycle. So, but I think in the future, regulations could change. We could add sites. We could, if we looked at George Rogers, we looked at Tryon Cove, we looked at Foothills, we added some medians. It could pencil out in the future. It just doesn't right at the moment because the scope is just Foothills. So I think this is a prudent investment, and I would highly recommend that you make it. I think the Sustainability Advisory Board did a great job in coming up with this. Frankly, this was not a solution that I had already scoped. They came up with it in a collaborative discussion, and I think it was really great. So anyways, I'll move on. Another thing that I also need feedback on you is solar panels. So we are, right now, the recommendation from Epcor is that we do 254 solar panels. It's about 114,000 kilowatt-hours annually is what that would come out to be. The cost of it is $580,000. And the, we think we can get a cent of from the Energy Trust for $15,000 of that. That's, it maxes out of that for solar. And then we also think that there's about $15,000 in annual electricity savings. So the payback of it is about 38 years and a 30-year lifespan. I think this is a worthy thing to do, even though it doesn't quite hit the 30-year payback. I think having solar, I think, is not only prudent, because, I mean, that's not a bad payback on something. I mean, there's a lot of things that don't have payback at all. So I think things that do have payback like this, I think, are smart, but then also, I think it's a good message to send to the community as well by being a leader in solar. So, but what I needed to point out here is that you'll notice that we've only selected two of those buildings to have solar on top of it. The other ones, and I'm going to just quickly go through it. So the wastewater basins, the reason that we don't recommend solar on that is from an operational standpoint. There's actually, because it is enclosed, we have to have hatches and things in order for them to get access and/or do maintenance. It actually is quite a bit of a challenge to have a covered thing, covered wastewater. That's why a lot of them aren't. That's why it's really rare to see one that is covered, is because it becomes an operational maintenance challenge. By having no solar panels on the roof, we can navigate and get into things a lot easier and open things up, because they have to get into it daily. This is not, this is not a thing occasionally. So having solar panels on that big wastewater basin, the big roof, would be problematic from an operational standpoint. The blower solids buildings is one we do want to have solar on it. I think it's ideal for that. It also has good sunlight exposure and all the things you need. And then electrical buildings is another one. So, but the filter building, frankly, with the UV upgrade, it would preclude letting solar be there because we need space for that. So that is why they can't be on that building. And then the headworks in the administrative and the maintenance building are all just, are too small, and not enough sunlight exposure to really make it worthwhile. But anyways, $580,000, I think, is a pretty good amount, just as a, we do not believe that this applies to 1.5%, but if anything did, it would be just the admin building, which is about $5 million. So 1.5% of $5 million is, we're talking $75,000. So we have, I mean, if, if 1.5% for solar did apply to this project, which we don't think it does because of the nature of this project, and also we'll carve out for wastewater treatment plants, but if it did, that was what would be, apply. And once again, that $75,000, we far exceeded that at $580,000 with, with the amount of solar that we have here. Okay, here, I just, here's a bunch of different resiliency things that we've done. The highlights of it, I mean, things I'm really proud about is the earthquake resiliency. We have all the building, buildings to category four, which is a big deal. That's the highest rating for earthquakes. That's what we did for City Hall. That's what I did at the Maintenance Center. I think it is a priority of the city. Yes, it does cost a little bit more, but marginally, I think it's absolutely worth it, and we have made the decision to include it, unless you guys, unless y'all tell me differently, but we are planning on including it. Another really cool thing in here is the emergency outfall. That's, that's also a very big deal. So we are very conservative in how we have built this capacity for this plant, really thinking through the future and thinking, you know, big weather events. But one thing happens is that when you have like a 100-year event, and you also have a high river level, which is rare for those things to happen together, but if they do happen, it's a, it's a bad deal. And so this emergency outfall would allow for us to continue to treat water 100% and then put it into the river, because the alternative is that it would overflow if we didn't have that. So we've really thought through it. It is expensive to do this for, for rare events, but frankly, we just don't want to have sewage running through the streets of them. We also don't want to put it in the river. This is one of the things that we're really trying to think through very hard on this project. Okay. There's a lot of other things. In my report, I go through each of them, but I'm going to keep going. One thing that we have done is that we did an envision sustainability framework analysis. And in this analysis, we would score as a gold, which is very, very high for these projects. And in this framework, it pointed out that we really excelled at quality of life and leadership, or the, or the two areas. We, the Sustainability Advisory Board recommends that we do not actually get the certification. The certification with financing is estimated about $750,000, which is very expensive for a piece of paper. We would recommend that you would put that towards something, like, for example, the reclaimed water upgrades, I think, would be a good thing instead of using that money. But if you were to tell me to do it, I, we would do it, obviously. I just, I think, the reason that we went through this analysis is that I wanted to be able to use an objective criteria to be able to show that there is a lot of sustainability features, that we have taken sustainability very seriously, and it is integrated throughout our design, and this is just one way to quantify that. And once again, the 43% might seem like it's a low number, is actually an extremely high number. 0% means no sustainability initiatives. 43% means a lot of sustainability initiatives. So I just want to make sure that that was kind of clear in that, too. So we also did greenhouse gas inventory. We thought that was a prudent thing to do, so we did. And 3/4 of the, like, the greenhouse gases is from electricity. The, the next, there's, you can see in that bar chart, you know, there's a lot of different things. The influent discharge is kind of the next one, but really, it's, I mean, it's electricity is the majority of it. And then on the, so on this table next to it, it shows that Aqua Nareda technology, which is what we've selected for this project, is by far more sustainable than the other compact technologies. These are the other two choices that we could have gone with, membrane and then non-nitrogen activated sludge is the other one. That's what it stands for. And both of those, as you can tell, are just quite substantially less sustainable than, than Aqua Nareda. I mean, you're talking like almost somewhere between eight and 10 times less efficient as membrane is to Aqua Nareda, so. And then here are the, just the list of topics I'm going to need to come back to you on in the future. And so touching them just really quickly, the financial capital structuring, it comes down to, there will be an equity contribution from, from Epcor, and it's going to be between 10 and 20% of the design bill cost. We haven't, we haven't come to what it'll be yet, but we're still negotiating that. One thing I just needed to share with you all is that when they bid, and they bid on this document a couple of years ago, when they were first hired to do the design work, in those, in what they hard bid was what it would cost to do, you know, 90%, or do 10% equity or 20% equity. And the cost of the equity goes up the, the lower the percentage that we use. So that's just one thing I wanted to share with you. We'll have a council meeting where, I mean, all this will be unveiled, we'll go over costs, we'll go over everything, and you'll see all this stuff, but I just wanted to prepare you for that, because that is how it works, and, and, but also up there. The next one is that we're also going to need to talk to you about WIFIA. WIFIA is an amazing thing that we got from EPA. We are one of four communities to get it. It's a really big deal. We got half the money. It's a really great thing. And the, the money is the best money we can get, and it has a lot of cool things around it, like, you know, not only do you not have to make any payments while you're in construction, you can delay payments for five years, and you can also lock in the interest rates for the whole project at the signing. So that would be, you know, when I come back to you in January, February. But the really cool thing is that you can also refinance for free up to two years later and lock in that rate for forever. So knowing, I mean, right now, we don't know what the climate is, but two years is a lot of flexibility, and I think it will go down in two years. So I think it's, it's a really cool, it's, it's an amazing financial instrument, it really is. The more that I've understood it, the more I looked at it, I have to say, I'm not sure this project would work without it. I'm just going to say that. So, yeah. Okay, the next one is, is the raise the debt limit. We're going to need to come back and have a conversation about raising the debt limit. That was passed back in 2014. I think the intent behind it was just to keep some guardrails so that we'd have conversations, but I think the intent was always to be able to allow us to raise it for projects that are necessary. So we'll come back with that conversation about that, too. And then we also need to start talking about construction, since, since I'm looking at March 1st is when we're asking all the property owners and all tenants to be moved out. So we could start construction as early as mid-March or, or April. And what I mean by construction, I mean as demo, is the first step, and also groundbreaking. We'd have a celebration and do all those things as well. But with that, I need, I need to start thinking about having an owner's rep for the construction phase. So that's another thing that I will key up a little bit. And then lastly, and this is going to be the hardest of all the conversations, I think, is that there is future staffing that's going to be needed, because one thing that happens with this is that we are switching the relationship with Portland. We are now the permit holder with DEQ with this new plant. Portland isn't. It would be us. So we are reversing, reversing. And that means that we're going to have to build a new fats, oils, and greases program. Right now, the city of Portland owns it, so that's something that we're going to have to come to the council and talk to you about what that would look like and start a new program, and it also includes figuring out how appeals would work through the court system, because right now it goes to the Portland appeal system and our court system, which we can't do that anymore if we're the ones that is now the permit holder and we're now owning those programs. We also need to do a pre-industrial treatment program, and then we also need somebody that can do the annual permitting that we would need. And then lastly, we also need somebody in the long term that can watch over Epcor and hold them accountable to the contract for, and, and the contract, there's a, I mean, our project agreement with appendices is like 700 pages. I mean, it's, it's very comprehensive, very thoughtful, but it, but there's, there's a lot into it and to hold them accountable, too. All right, so that's, so here's a recommended motion that I would ask you to make. So I need the authorized city manager to sign an emergency, allows for me to do the design work for the reclaimed water project, if you want to move forward with that. If you don't, then don't do that motion. And then if you want to keep moving forward with reclaimed water, then you direct me to add that amount to the, to the budget. And then lastly, I need some additional services to finish out the negotiations with Epcor with our legal team. So I need the $200,000 as well. So with that, here's our website that I would encourage the public to go check out. There's a lot of things in there. And then I would also love to turn over to Kirsty just for a few statements from Epcor. I just want to say that the city of Portland and Epcor have been wonderful partners. We were working very collaboratively together. We actually spent two days a couple of weeks ago, 16 hours' worth of just back-to-back-to-back workshops, and we actually accomplished quite a lot together. So Kirsty, would you mind maybe saying a few words on behalf of Epcor?
Sure. Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for, for having me back. As Anthony mentioned, we're now at 90% designs, and we're working, you know, very collaboratively with both cities and trying to find as many efficiencies as we can, and as well as progressing the permitting activities, as Anthony indicated. Of course, very excited, and our partners are, too, Acon and WSP about the project, and we've remained committed to it and making this work, work for, for you all. Yeah, I guess just want to thank, you know, the city of La Cusca, as well as the city of Portland for their continued support and working through this with us.
Any questions?
Questions? Counselor Afghan, how many questions do you have?
Only two.
Okay.
Thank you so very much. With the interest rate changing, is this going to, is it going to impact our project costs and rates and those kind of things? And if the answer is yes, are we going to see those results sometime in the future?
So the answer is yes. However, we are value engineering and doing a lot of other things, and I expect the price to continue to go down, even though certain aspects of the project will go up. There are certain things we're adding to engineering. I mean, even adding the $1 million will cause the project to go up a little bit if you guys decide to move forward with reclaimed water, but I'm confident that, that we're working very collaboratively with Epcor and that we are cutting costs. So I do expect costs to, the overall price tag will go down when you see it. I don't want to hint at what it will be quite yet, but, but yes, we will, I'll come back with a study session in like November, December, probably late November, early December, and avail all of those to you, and, and we'll get a good pulse on where we are financially on all of it.
All right. Thank you. The second question is really a comment and a question to my colleagues here. Sustainability costs money, but if we want a planet to live on, we've got to spend money. So we have resources that are encouraging us, the citizens, to use less water, but when we have the opportunity to reclaim water, we're only going halfway. And it doesn't make sense to me why we're not going all the way in and have the reclaimed water put in. I do realize it costs money, but sustainability costs money. Either we're in or we're not. So I think as the city councilors, we, we need to have that discussion. So I'm all in putting the equipment in, but I also want to have a conversation about why aren't we going all the way in?
Good question. So as, you know, Mr. Hooper came to the Sustainability Advisory Board meeting, I have the privilege of being the liaison to the Sustainability Advisory Board. And the, this strategy of preparing the site for the reclaim, for, for, you know, for the future reclaim to use throughout the redeveloped Foothills area actually came from the youth member on the Sustainability Advisory Board. The entire board embraced it. And it's not so much, it's not a cost factor. I mean, Mr. Hooper brought the full cost, and that wasn't a factor. It was, it was making the project even more impactful by holding back, because if we do the whole thing now, then we don't know what redevelopment is going to be like in Foothills, and so we'd miss out on the opportunity to have an even bigger impact if we just prepare right now, wait for, see what redevelopment and how we can really use that reclaimed water in an even bigger way in the future. So we thought it was a good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good question. Thank you, Counselor Afghan. Counselor Rick.
I just first want to really thank the Sustainability Advisory Board and Director Hooper. The collaboration that I'm seeing is fantastic, and that's just a prime example of what we need to see all of our boards and commissions doing. So thank you so much to you and to the Sustainability Advisory Board, and I fully support all the sustainability initiatives that have been placed. So I am 100% on board with those.
Thank you. Yes, likewise. It's been a great, and, and Mr. Hooper and Ms. Craig, we appreciate you being here, especially later at night. The continued good partnership between the city and Epcor and the The continued good partnership between the city and Epcor and the good collaboration that we've been hearing as of late is really positive news for us as a council. Makes us feel really good about this project and our continued long-term relationship with Epcor, so thank you all for that. Counselor, what?
May I make a suggestion? Can I move all three items? Does anyone have an objection to that?
Yes, move all three items.
Yeah, I can, thank you. I would like to move and authorize the city manager to sign amendment number two to the preliminary services agreement with Epcor Foothills Water Project, Inc. for $169,828. Direct staff to add 100, or $1,114,000 of budget to the wastewater treatment facility project to enable the use of reclaimed water in the future, and authorize the city manager to sign an amendment to the legal services, excuse me, legal services contracts with Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood for $200,000.
I second that.
Counselor Riddick got it in there. Give it to Counselor.
Ah, that's cool. Three second, wow.
For not asking too many questions. All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
And a great thanks to Mr. Hooper for all he's done.
And for watching over us tonight, too.
He, he could have gone on for hours, and he does it with such enthusiasm that we should really let him do it sometime.
There'll be plenty of opportunities.
But you need to talk to the mayor to get in the beginning of the agenda, sir. So, anyway, and for acting as the city manager.
What he gets for being on.
And you guys color coordinated. I was, that's very nice. We're a first-class operation.
Very nice. All right. We now have information from council. Anyone need burning issues, burning issues?
I, I was representing the mayor over the weekend on two events. One, the SAB, and they did know it, we have to.
The electricity fair.
Yeah, we have to congratulate Duke and his crew. They made a great event. Honestly, I was very, I'm going to buy an electric car now, big time. There were a lot of good stuff.
Wow, Duke will be very.
I read, I stuck to script, read the entire.
Yes, I was told that it was a shorter speech than usual from you.
Yes, because someone wrote it and told me to do that. So it was wonderful, and then I missed my game, first half of my game, to represent the mayor for the youth. The, these, these kids are wonderful kids. They are volunteering. It's a, volunteer, it's a, I forget.
Yeah, service group.
Service group, and they have wonderful children that, you know, you look at them and you say that we are saved in Lake Oswego. We are really good citizenry, and I was happy, but I missed my first half of my game.
There'll be other games.
It's fine. Thank you, Counselor.
That's it. That's what I did.
Any reports from officers?
No report. Thank you for, for having me today.
Thanks for holding down the fort. Thank you for that, sir. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Trudy. Thank you, and we missed having you guys here. Oh, Mayor, he's so fast, he's gone. Waits for no one.
My wife called down.